If you would all please stand to say the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We're going to hear from several different speakers tonight. So, Board, I would like to ask that because some speakers will have several slides, if you don't mind making note of some questions that you have in the first slide, perhaps it'll be answered in the second slide for this efficiency. I appreciate that. And right now, the first item on the agenda would be the cost reduction plan.
All right, thank you very much, Board, and I look forward to presenting this plan to you. You know, and just a reminder to everyone that because of COVID restrictions, we can only allow 25 or less people in the room here. Hopefully, everybody can hear us out there in the streaming world, you know, in terms of what we're talking about today. We want to be totally transparent with this and appreciate those that are tuning in to watch and listen. As the Board knows, you know, we have been presented with a very distinct financial challenge in terms of correcting our budget situation and doing it in a manner that does not significantly or negatively impact students and teachers. You know, and when you go back during my time as superintendent, which is actually almost two years ago when I was named superintendent here, I was well aware of the fact that I was walking into a situation where there was probably some budget issues to fix or take care of. You know, and I will tell you, we made some adjustments, you know, to the budget to try to fix a lot of that. You know, we made some administrative cuts last year to the tune of eliminating eight positions out of the administration building and some others that amounted to about $750,000, $800,000. And I'll show you some data here in a second that shows that because it did decrease the amount of deficit spending, you know, that we had in 2019 versus the previous years. You know, so it is a significant issue that we have to fix. I will tell you that once I got into this position, once we got a new CFO, Laura Huminger, and she dug into the details, we found that the problem or the issue was more significant than what we thought in terms of what we're dealing with. You know, and what we're dealing with here and the reason we're bringing this cost reduction plan to the Board to discuss tonight is really three big issues. Number one, we're in a deficit spending model, you know, a significant deficit spending model, and I'll show you that here in a second. Number two, because we've been in a deficit spending model since 2015, it has depleted our cash balances and rainy day fund. And number three, as we move into the future for this district, we have to become healthier financially. Two students, two teachers. You know, so all this together necessitated this cost reduction plan. And I will tell you, you know, the current Board, the current administration, didn't create this issue. We've been charged to fix it, you know, and we're trying to fix it with this presentation. We feel strongly that we need to fix this, you know. So, it's a challenge. It's obviously very stressful to the community. It's stressful to all of us up here. I can tell you, we had some guiding principles as we went through this plan, you know, the creation of this plan. Number one, we didn't want to have, we didn't want to have to make significant cuts to teachers and staff. And I think you'll see in the plan, we're not going to lay anybody off. We're not rifting teachers despite what you hear on social media and even in the media. We're not doing that. We're not rifting and cutting people. The other thing is that we wanted this cost reduction plan, like I said earlier, to not negatively impact the classroom and the students and the teachers. You know, and I think this plan does that to a very, very large extent. So, with that being said, I really want to get into the data. You know, where are we currently at as a district? You know, on the screen, and I know it may be, we're having technical difficulties in terms of connecting with the streaming piece to what's on our screen. So, it may look small, but we'll try to talk our way through it and give you as much data and details as possible. On the screen, you will find the DOAB website. DOAB stands for Distraction and Appeals Board. DOAB monitors all school districts' finances throughout the state of Indiana. It's very similar to what we deal with in school accountability. We've had school accountability for years in Indiana, and schools get grades. Well, DOAB has now school district financial accountability. Really, you know, they're monitoring our finances and how is each school district doing throughout the state. You know, and they have fiscal indicators, you know, that do that. You know, and on this website are our fiscal indicators. And I'm going to ask April here to scroll down. The first fiscal indicator is average daily membership. Thankfully, our membership has been stayed steady and actually it's gone up the last couple of years. This year it went up, and we're very pleased with that. So, that indicator looks good. The next indicator are your fund balances. And April, if you'll scroll over, in 2019, part of 2019, and scroll under the Operation Fund, the Education Fund, and the Rainy Day Fund. Here's the Education Fund balance ending 2019. We ended the year with $108,000 in cash balance. And please remember those, the numbers I share with you. You know, I'll share with you in a minute where we should be. Okay, if you go to the Operations Fund, which is the smallest, from the light gray on over the right. No, it's in the middle there. Operations Fund, we ended 2019 with a cash balance of $94,000. And then, when you look at the Rainy Day Fund, you know, the funds down one. Rainy Day Fund, we ended 2019 with $2.399 million. Okay, so a total of about $3.3 billion, I believe, is where we're at. That gives you an indication of what our cash balances are. Okay, go down to the next indicator, our annual deficit surplus. And as you can see, if you go back, the indicators go back all the way to 2012. In 2012, we were in the green, you know, or in the positive, $2.6 million. 2013, we were in the positive, $3.6 million. In 2014, we were in the positive, $2.394 million. Then all of a sudden, in 2015, we started deficit spending. In 2015, it was to the tune of $4.8 million that we spent, more than what we had. In 2016, it was $1.672 million we spent, more than what we had. 2017, $1.3 million more than what we had. 2018, $3.449 million more than what we had. And then, as I told you, you know, when I came on board, we immediately tried to make some adjustments, eliminated some positions, a lot of them up here at the administration building, and it cut that deficit spending down to $389,000. But one of the things we found when Ms. Huminger came on board as our CFO, it's not enough, okay? It wasn't enough, and we need to do more. And that's why we created this cost reduction plan. The next indicator is your fund balances as a percent of expenditures. Okay, and you can see the downward trend there from 2014, 15 to 2019. Now, I will tell you, DOAB recommends that this indicator be above 8%. In 2019, we finished the year at 2.9%. Okay, so we're well below 8%. Basically, 8% is one month's worth of, you know, emergency fund, you know, to pay your bills and everything. Okay, so we have significant improvements to make here. And then, these are your revenue types. That's another indicator, where's your revenue coming from? And then, the last indicator is operating referendum revenue. We do not have an operating referendum, you know, fund that has money in it. We have a past one. I'm not so sure the community would pass that referendum, you know, to be honest with you. The facility referendum didn't pass several years ago and failed by a large margin. Now, what I would like to do is show you a few other districts that are very similar in size to Greater Clark. The first one is Franklin Township Schools, which is on the south side of Indianapolis. And if you look at their enrollment, highlight it, April. They have almost the same number of students we have, 10,300 students. That's almost exactly what we have in Greater Clark. And then, let's go down to their funds and highlight those same three funds. Yeah, it's not an easy website, though. In the Education Fund, they have a cash balance of $9.259 million. In the Operation Fund, they have a cash balance of $5.9 million. And then, in the Rainy Day Fund, they have a cash balance of $13.445 million, for a total of cash balance of, you know, right around $29 million. Okay, and then you go down and look at their percentage of expenditures. Go on down. They're at 34.7%. Remember, I said that has to be above 8%. And they're well above 8%. Okay, and let's go to at least one or two more districts that are very similar in size to us. The next one is Pike Township, which is on the northwest side, I believe, of Indianapolis. Very similar demographics to what Greater Clark has. Okay, their enrollment, 2,800, so about 500 more students than us. You know, their funds, you look at their Education Fund, $6.778 million. Operation Fund, $6.895 million. And Rainy Day Fund, $11 million. So, you know, their total cash balance around $24.6 million. And let's look at one last, or two more. East Allen Schools, which is up by Fort Wayne, very similar to Greater Clark. Takes a while to load, so. They have less students than us, actually, 9,700. Okay, and their Education Fund, they have $19,562,000. And their Operation Fund, $14,700,000. Rainy Day Fund, $4,394,000, for a total of $38.5 million. And remember where we're at, we're at 3.3, around 3.3 million is where we're at right now. And the last one I want to show you is our neighbor to the west. And I mentioned this at the Board meeting the other night. I know people in our community don't want to compare Greater Clark to New Orleans, Floyd. I get that, and I do believe we do a lot of things better than them. I'll just say that, the competitive nature that I have. But one thing, you know, that they've done better than us is the budget, you know, quite frankly. And I will tell you, one of the reasons I wanted to show you New Orleans, Floyd, is because, if you recall, 10 to 12 years ago, they presented a cost reduction plan to their Board that is very similar to the one that we just, we're getting ready to present to you in terms of they looked at closing buildings, outsourcing. They reduced their repairs down to 29 hours from full-time. They outsourced their custodians. They did a lot of things to try to improve their budget situation. So, let me, let me show you where they are at today because I think 10, 12 years ago, they would tell you they were in a similar situation that we're in today, you know. And you look at the Education Fund, they have $9.889 million. Operation Fund, $16.336 million. Rainy Day Fund, $5.5 million, you know, and that's a total of $31, about $31 million in cash balance. So, there are some comparable data, you know, in terms of our district and other districts throughout the state, you know, and it shows you we're not where we need to be, you know. And you look at their percentage, is that their, you know, New Orleans, 32%? Like I said, it has to be above 8, or it should be above 8. That's what DOAB recommends, you know. So, we need to make some significant improvements to our budget. We need to streamline things operationally so that we have more cash balance and we can do more for our students and the classroom. The next item we want to jump to is the actual plan. And as I said, you know, what DOAB is doing is very similar to what they do with school accountability. Now, they're doing it with fiscal and financial accountability in school districts. We understand that, you know, there's, you know, I'll go over the three main reasons again why we're doing this cost reduction plan. We're in deficit spending, we've depleted our cash balances, and we have to find a way somewhere in the future to get more resources to our students and teachers down the road. You know, within the plan, our objective and DOAB's recommendation is for school districts is your cash balances should be between 8 and 10%. And you already should, you know, you already saw our percentage, 2.9, you know, so we have ways to go. This plan that we're presenting, our cabinet, executive team worked on this plan for three months. It's not something we took lightly. It's not like we had one meeting and threw it all together and then brought it to you. We've looked at every piece, like in line item of the budget that we can look at in terms of streamlining, you know, costs and saving money. And we feel like we've done that with this plan. You know, we've created a cost savings plan that is very balanced, you know. You'll see that there's almost $3 million savings in the Operation Fund that we're presenting to you and almost $3 million in savings in the Education Fund that we're presenting to you. And there's balance between secondary and elementary. It's, nobody, no one group's taken, you know, a hit on this in terms of we've tried to be very balanced, but. Now, you know, where should we be as a district? When you talk about 8 to 10% cash balance, and that's what DOAB recommends. I've already told you where we're at, and two of our funds were at $100,000. In the Rainy Day Fund, we're right at $3 million, okay? The Education Fund, which we currently have $100,000 in, should be between $5.2 million and $6.5 million. So, we have work to do there. The Operations Fund, which we have right at $100,000 in, should be between $3.5 million and $5 million. We have some work to do there. The Rainy Day Fund should be between $12 million and $16 million, and we have right at $3 million, okay? So, that's 8 to 10%. That's where we should be, you know, somewhere in those ranges, you know. And you guys can see the numbers and make your own judgments on where we're currently at and where we need to be. Let's go ahead and go to the next one. You know, and it doesn't stop here either. I mean, we're looking at other things. We're looking at food service. How can we be more efficient with it? We're looking at textbook rental. We're looking at the self-insurance fund. We're looking at the retirement fund. We're looking at how do we get more salary benefits and the grants versus the Education Fund? You know, so we're continuously looking at this. It's one thing that I'm proud to say that Ms. Huminger does a very, very good job of looking at every line item. You know, going back to our mission, what is our mission in this district? You know, our mission is to educate students, prepare students for lifelong success. You know, and that's the most important thing to me. I know it's the most important thing to this Board and certainly our cabinet, you know, and our teachers and our staff. Also, you know, what are we trying to achieve within our district? We want safe, clean, and engaging learning environments. Staff who feel supported and empowered to improve professional practice. Resources available to support the whole child and maximize learning. And ongoing accountability for continuous improvement. What are some of the necessary shifts we need to make as a district? You know, we need to go from shift, we need to make a shift from limited resources spread across too many schools to fewer schools that receive more resources and are supported by a smaller central office. We need to shift from higher turnover rates at every level of the organization to higher retention rates, particularly for our certified staff. We need to shift from having many under-resourced programs and services and sites to fewer and more focused programs and services that give results. We need to shift from a reliance on inadequate funds from the state. And believe me, I believe state funding is inadequate. Our state representatives and our state senators could do better than what they've been doing the last 10 to 12 years. There's no doubt about that. You know, and I would ask those same people that are on social media concerned about this cost reduction plan, I would hope that they would also call their state representatives and state senators and show that same concern in terms of the funding for public education.
Kick you off for a second. We'll have a slight delay. We're trying to get back on, well, technical difficulty.
If you click those three dots in the top right-hand corner next to our picture, yeah, go to history, recently closed tabs, click the four tabs.
There you go. Tech expert.
Thanks. Very good. All right, you know, what are our key findings, you know, in the district? You know, things that we do well, our positive attributes. I mean, and we do a lot of things well in this district. We have a very, you know, we have a lot of talented people in this district, talented teachers, talented staff, talented students. Katie, just show that with her technical expertise. We have strong, committed instructional leaders that are focused on students and staff, open to innovative opportunities, empowering leaders, increased enrollment. That's a good thing that our enrollment's been going up. Our assess value's been going up in the district. We have the academy model in this district, which has been fantastic for Greater Clark. Virtual learning options. We were the first school district in the state of Indiana to come back to school in person, and we've done it safely. Progressive assessments and academic model, consistent professional development opportunities across all levels. I can tell you, when we get new teachers here that have been other places, they're shocked at how much professional development we offer to them. They don't, you don't see what we offer at other school districts in terms of what we do with professional development and best practices for teachers. Operations, transportation, streamlining efforts, energy efficiency efforts, and building mergers. Services that support an optimal learning environment, you know, with our guaranteed energy savings contracts. You know, we're trying to do the right things for this district, but things do take time. Technology and data, successful deployment of additional Chromebook devices, data-driven approach to strategic decisions. We were one of the first districts to do the one-to-one initiative in the state of Indiana. All very positive things for Greater Clark. You know, and you look at our observations and findings about Greater Clark, we have a very supportive community willing to increase operating and capital funding for Greater Clark and return for greater transparency and improved outcomes. And believe me, we tried to be transparent in terms of this cost reduction plan. I've met with at least 10 groups the last week and a half, our employees. You know, and we wanted to share this with our employees first before it went public and out into the community because we thought that was the fair thing to do, is to talk to our employees first and explain to them the whats and the whys of this cost reduction plan because we do care about our employees, you know, we do care about them greatly. There appears to be an openness to strategically partner with third-party stakeholders to achieve high levels of efficiency. Sustained enrollment increases over the past two years and expected enrollment growth. Our demographic study showed that, you know, that we're going to get growth in this district. Operations and transportation spending is much higher than educational industry averages. That's one finding that we have found, that we're spending too much on transportation. We can reduce that a little bit, but still provide the same services. And corporations spend significant resources and time managing various complex issues that negatively impact finances and overall education and operations outcomes. Historic roadblocks. You know, I've been in this district for 16 years, and I've seen these roadblocks happen, you know, on various agenda items that have come to the Board or never made it to the Board because of these roadblocks. Historic inability to fully implement proposed operational reforms due to internal resistance to needed changes and continued attempts to accommodate unique customized requests from various employment groups within the district. A historic reluctance to partner strategically and a strong preference for self-delivery. Missing opportunities to leverage third-party partners and simultaneously enhance local small business usage. As a result of some of these historic roadblocks, most reform plans do not survive after, after the initial internal opposition. You know, and that's been the case, you know, since I've been in this district. And I think that's one of the reasons, you know, we haven't made some of the necessary changes that we, you know, should have made years ago. Our guiding principles, and we talked about this already a little bit. You know, our current account balances are a big concern. The DOAB fiscal indicators are a very big concern. Potential DOAB state takeover. You know, if we don't correct this issue, DOAB has the ability to come into a school district and take you over and then force you to do a cost reduction plan that you have no say in. You know, right now, we can control what we want to do with this cost reduction plan. If it gets to a point, we keep pushing this down the road and they get involved, our, we don't have control anymore. They have control, and they dictate what you will and will not do. Deficit spending practices, depleted cash balances. You know, and we need to realize greater financial resources to invest in teacher retention and student programming. Okay, initially, when our cabinet started down this road of creating a cost reduction plan, our initial target was $3 million savings in the Education Fund and $2.5 million savings in the Operation Fund. You will see at the end of this that we've actually come up with a little over $6 million in savings in this cost reduction plan. Because one thing we do not know is, you know, we do not know what state funding will be like this next biennial budget. You know, Governor Holcomb came out yesterday and said he's going to increase funding in the first year by 2% for education and 1% the second year for education. But we haven't heard what the legislature's going to do and what they're willing to approve. That's why I would recommend that all our constituents in Greater Clark, call your local state representative, call your local state senator. You know, those people are Rita Fleming, Ed Clare, Chris Garten, Ron Druze, okay? They're all in this area, and you should reach out to them. I mean, there's a reason that that governor's teacher compensation report was done because the state of Indiana has not been funding public schools adequately, which has resulted in our teachers being paid far less than the surrounding states. You know, we're essentially, I think, last in the Midwest as far as teacher pay, especially the teacher growth, growth in teacher pay. Okay, timeline, you know. We met with all the employee groups that are directly impacted by this last week and earlier this week. We're having the work session tonight. Our hope is that we would bring this cost reduction plan to the Board on January 26th for approval. You know, if this cost reduction plan is approved, there's a lot of planning and managerial, operational type things that have to take place between not now and July 1st. The actual start of implementation would be July 1st of this cost reduction plan. But there's a lot of pre-planning that needs to be done before July 1st comes. So, with So with that being said, I want to jump into the details of the cost reduction plan. We're first going to talk about the education fund and the cost savings that we think we can gain in the education fund. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Karen Wesley, who's our Director of Elementary Schools. She's going to talk to you about Bridgepoint Elementary. Welcome, Karen.
Good evening. I want to make sure, are we okay? Just so I can confirm, I'll make sure everybody can hear. I know we have several people watching from home. Okay, for the first slide, I have, before I jump into that, I've been asked, you know, how did Bridgepoint become one of the chosen buildings? And so I wanted to briefly describe that first. Just like Mr. Loffner described, we didn't take this lightly. We looked at every stone and I turned it. Then we analyzed the cost savings versus the benefit as well as the cons. You know, every solution creates another problem. So, you know, our new problem is going to be worse than the old problem and is it worth saving money for? We did that about every item, so I'm really proud of that process, even though not all people agree with what we chose. So, Bridgepoint Elementary is one of the oldest buildings and it is in the most need of the most expensive costs and repairs. And so as we get into this slide, we pointed to, you know, overnight, the students who are in the building in most need of repair could be in one of two, possibly three buildings that are the absolute youngest in our building. If one is brand-new, the other is the most recently building, second youngest. And the third one that we could end up sending students to is the most newly renovated. So really, they would go from the worst facility situation to the three best we have to offer in the corporation. So that was the cost versus benefit versus new problem for this solution, you know, analysis. So, the current enrollment routes would mostly be shifted between Franklin Square Elementary and Riverside Elementary. Roughly two-thirds of Bridgepoint would go to Franklin Square and a third would be sent to Riverside. Those routes would be developed. We're estimating right now around the Perron Lane area. We haven't gotten deep to the nuts and bolts because we need more information, but we would gather that soon in the month of February and have that information ready for people early so they could make some decisions. But we're figuring that Perron Lane would be kind of that divider point. There's a section in there along 10th Street that already loops to North Haven that some people think should go to, should have thought, thought should have gone to Bridgepoint for years. So around that area, we would look to maybe expand that curve to lighten the load on which way we're sending those students. And North Haven has two classrooms. They could take up to 50 kids easily. And so that's going to, you know, be solidified as we actually did paper into the exact students that would go in which direction. I want to be clear in letting you know that currently during at Bridgepoint, we have no transportation zones because they have a, they can just walk. Those students would now have transportation to their new schools wherever they get redistricted. And actually, it would eliminate some of our NTCs that we currently have. So more people would be translated or transported, not less. So. Also, another question that I've been asked this week is, you know, we just redistricted Spring Hill and Maple into a school. Is this redistricting going to affect those students? Are they going to get bumped out to make room for a Bridgepoint student? And that is not, that is not one of our options. Instead, we will work with the current Bridgepoint population to send them in one of those three directions to keep that current enrollment of students at Franklin Square. We'll make that clear. Okay, on the next slide. So staffing would be the next question. You know, we know, we explained what we're going to do with the students. What are we going to do with the staff? Well, in our staffing model for every elementary school, we have a certain formula we follow for classroom teachers, for educators, special education, also every category, principal, office staff. We would shift those numbers first to figure out who's going to go where. Now we're in the new demographics, you know, what are our favorite lunch numbers look like now? Will you follow any of our other subgroups that need services? What do all those look like? Run the new formulas and then create our new staffing sheet. Obviously Riverside and Franklin Square specifically are going to be short in every category because we give them the largest chunk. Then from there, we would go to Bridgepoint staff and start divvying them. The bulk of the Bridgepoint staff would go with that majority of their students. They'd follow them to the new schools. There will be a list, one of the reasons this saves us money is not just all the facilities items, but when you close a school building, there are certain unique positions that you don't need double in a new building. So those would be eliminated through attrition. And so those positions though are not going to lose their jobs. That's one thing we want to be clear. Whether we're talking about teachers or parents or any other of our office staff, our principal, no one is losing their job. They will be placed in open positions. When the dust settles, say we have an extra office clerk or an extra health assistant, you know, we are not going to reduce them in force or fire them or whatever. We will just choose a school that kind of has a higher need and place them there temporarily until somebody of their job description opens up so that we can then place them at that time. So that's how we're not going to be fired. We want to keep through this process. So. All in all, this has the potential to save us $800,000 per year annually once the dust settles though. And we feel like that's conservative. There's a few nickel-and-dime type figures that we didn't lump in there because some of those things are unpredictable, but we know it's going to save us. So. Are there any questions about the Bridgepoint?
Should I ask those now?
Okay.
I've gotten a couple of calls and I'm just looking to clarify. I thought I knew what I was talking about, perhaps I didn't. I had a couple of parents to call and say, I heard that Perron Lane, all the students have to go to Perron Lane, as we've mentioned, that's going to be the cutoff. They all have to go to Perron Lane and then they're going to get bused from there. How am I going to get my kid to Perron Lane?
Okay.
That's not true, is it?
That is not true. So all of our bus routes will be analyzed and figured. And even the students in the no-walking zone who will now have a bus, Mr. Borders with transportation will help run analysis and they have certain formulas they run on how many stops per mile or half-mile or what have you. And they take in all of those danger zones, maybe there's no sidewalk in an area. People do all of that, just like we do for our staffing sheet. It's almost like starting from zero. They'll run all of that and see where the new bus stop should be. People are not going to have to get their child to Perron Lane, so.
Yep. I've just got one more.
Okay.
Now I'm going to fly. The other thing is, I don't think our parents are understanding. You did a good job of describing the fact that our teachers are going to move and all of the staff are going to figure out. But I don't think they understand that there is space in these schools, these two schools. They think if there are two third grades at Franklin Square, then all of these third graders coming from Bridgepoint are going to have to smish into there. That's not true. There are empty rooms.
Correct.
And their teachers, if they so choose, may not want to go in them. They will be there to group them.
Yes, correct.
That's correct.
No, if somebody walked around any of these buildings that we're talking about, Riverside and Franklin Square mostly, and even North Haven, you might not think they have empty rooms, but, you know, we teachers, we could create them. You've got a space, I'm going to use it. So they turn some rooms and maybe there's a room they turned into a break room that really was never meant to be a break room, you know. So it may not look that way when you walk around. There are also support staff services that if we can give them a full classroom, we do. But their services can be done from a smaller intervention spot in the building. So it's going to require some of those people who have enjoyed that large amount of space but might only serve six students at a time to move back into those smaller spaces, so.
And the classes won't be appreciably larger?
We're using the same ratio, so the classroom sizes will not increase.
Plus one person contacted me, said, I did the math and this classroom size is around to nearly 40.
No, that is not the case.
No, thank you.
So taking back off that, what will be the student teacher ratio?
26 to 1 in our formula.
We've used that formula for probably 70 years, 90, you know, it's been a while.
Yeah.
Karen, and just to speak to this, I know Chad might be able to help a little bit with it. I've heard a lot of people saying, well, now the child's going to be on the bus up to an hour and there's no way in proximity if they could affect it possibly out now that even.
Yeah, I think that's just a rumor. You know, we try, quite honestly, in the country, New Washington, Charleston.
Right, sure.
Where you're logging a lot of miles, that's our cap. That's where we try to keep the routes. But at Jeff Prober, we don't have any route currently or with this redistricting, that'll be close to that.
Right, I just wanted to be for people watching.
Well, let me add, I mean, we look at this as a great opportunity for the students of Bridgepoint. That number one, you know, the students that go to Franklin Square are going to be leaving a school that's 54 years old and needs a lot of work. And they're going to be going to a brand-new school. The kids at Bridgepoint that are going to Riverside are going to be going to a school that's 11, 12 years old. Those are our two newest elementaries in this district. You know, so, and a lot of their teachers will be following them, you know. And so it's really, we see it as a great opportunity. They're going to get the same great education that Greater Clark provides in newer buildings.
If I can intervene, I just, I know we have Daniel Borders watching. He just sent me a text and said, he's already ran the analysis. Eight minutes is what any of the students of Bridgepoint anticipate extra time out of us, is eight minutes.
Just for the people at home, like, I want people to understand like how much it would cost for you to get Bridgepoint up to the level of Franklin Square or Riverside or any of that other elementary schools? And why that definitely dictates why this is on the road.
May I?
Yeah, that's all I was going to ask you.
Sure, that's a great question. And, you know, I reached out to Lancer BB, Terry Lancer, who, they're the ones conducting our current facility study. They're also the design criteria developer for our next wave of projects. And Mr. Lancer has given me the $15 million amount.
$15 million.
$15 million. And Mr. Freeman, it's all about optimal learning environments. That's what we're trying to, and Mr. Loffner and all of the cabinet have made these recommendations based on trying to create and enhance those optimal learning environments. And you're exactly right. It's a great question. If we were to try and bring Bridgepoint, 1955 construction, up to a level where we are offering those optimal learning environments with air quality, space, the best, you know, the best that we can offer those students, we feel like it's certainly a redistricting plan for going to Franklin Square, Riverside, our two newest elementary schools.
And how much, and just for people, how much would it cost for you to build a newer elementary school? Because once you get closer to that number, that's when we have to start looking at it.
I can tell you the bond for Franklin Square, it's right at 60,000 square feet. Now, keep in mind, that's including Mayand Fieldhouse. But that was renovation and new space. The bond was $15 million for Franklin Square. And talking with Terry Lancer and Lancer Plus BB, a building that what we are seeing in Indiana is industry standard of about 800, 750 to 800 for an elementary capacity building. They've built two. One is still under construction in Clark Pleasant, which is up on I-65 just south of Indianapolis. Whiteland, the Whiteland exit. That's a $25 million state-of-the-art elementary school of about 750 to 800 capacity.
We've gotten close enough to that number where we have to think about, is the school worth saving?
Yes, sir.
To try to put that much money into it, that's why, that's why I'm saying we want people to understand.
I think parents are, somebody else. I think parents are struggling with the fact that Bridgepoint is such a wonderful school. And it is. The staff is very empathetic. They're caring, they know the kids by name. And I think that's going to go away. And, you know, I've tried to explain to them that didn't happen when we moved the kids from Maple, you know, into Franklin Square. But just, we just, and the other thing was, are we going to provide a program to help those parents and those kids understand what's going on before we do it to them? Like we did with Maple and Spring Hill. I mean, we had brought two groups of kids together, they are two staffs. This is going in the opposite direction. But they just asked for some help in understanding what that process is.
So, yes, I've got an outline of a series of meetings. But if this gets voted as approved, then I would immediately begin putting in calendars of the principals of all receiving schools, where you'd have to work out logistics. Which we, I feel like that's going to take about a month for us to kind of get final details. Then I would plan to have a public meeting with the Bridgepoint community. If we're in red, it would still be through Zoom, but hopefully we could have it in a gym or something. But that's all to be told still. Where we can go over the most commonly asked questions, give them some specific information. Eventually, every parent would get a letter with their child's name on it, with their determination, their route, you know, any predictive information we could get from transportation. We could get more specific as the lunch goes along. We won't have everything at first, but we would involve them in the spreading of the information to get it first. And then with the kids, we can do some creative things, depending on the COVID situation. Anywhere from a field trip to walk through and see their new building. And, you know, I would probably solicit some vendors to get us some T-shirts. Okay, you're a Falcon now, you're a Road Runner now, you know, like I, whatever. Those types of things, we can add in that pep. What I have learned of being a mother of a six-year-old is that if I have an emotional attachment to something and even if I'm sad about it, if I feed that energy to her, she's going to be sad about it. But I was like, I can't, I, you know, we can't, we know that this is a sad thing. We know that schools have their microculture, they have their own pride in being a Bridgepoint bear and many generations have probably come through this school. We know all that. We know we have to intentionally help build that new pride in where we're headed as well. And we will help do some things with that. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. From what I understand, we're not going to lose any, we won't be reducing staff, either teachers or, does that also include maintenance and janitorial staff? Or are there going to be, are any of those guys going to be lost on this changeover?
Well, the new staffing situation would be for all categories. You know, for a building of 500 students, let's run our formulas. How many cafeteria orders will air-harp be just applied? How many custodians will we need, you know, all that? So all of those staffing numbers would run through that. Now, we're simultaneously talking about some other things in this plan that could affect that department. But the need would be calculated by the same formula that we use for our building.
So basically, you have X number of janitors needed for X number of students. Would that be natural?
Yes, and they run in ranges, you know.
So we're not really going to be cutting manpower very much at all. And I can see, maybe I'm misunderstanding it. So we're going to be cutting the utility costs for the building because we turned the building off. And we cut off maintenance costs for the building because we turned it off and just let it mothmold it or sell it or whatever. Does that come up to the 800,000? Because I don't hear any other ways that we're saving it.
Well, the salaries of the extra positions that wouldn't have to be built in that direction, like we won't need, we won't need two principals, you know, in a building.
But we're still going to have that person on staff?
Correct, through attrition. And also, that brings up a good point for all of these line items. If we could make them happen overnight, that's immediately how much we would save. But doing through attrition, we won't really be recouping that until everyone's in their final place and there's no excess and we haven't. We're making the commitment not to save that immediately because we're not firing people. Does that make sense? Okay.
That's where I was not seeing the saving here.
Yes, so at first, we're still getting savings. It's still, we're still going to be spending less this, next year on Bridgepoint than we did this year. But we could have a few pockets where they're extra in a building until we actually find a spot for them to go to. So we're still going to be saving our education fund. It's just, we don't want our people to lose their jobs. So we're going to work through and give them different assignments. But I anticipate those, that number being very low because I don't know of a summer where every single job description in this corporation, we haven't at least had one opening. You know, I mean, there's, in a corporation our size, you've got a turnover in every job description. So I think the number that we would have is like, okay, you're just going to hang out here until we find a spot for you. I think that's going to be very, very, very low.
Well, I didn't anticipate that would be the case, you know. Because you're right, I see the number of openings that come up on a regular basis as those emails come out. Do we know when you anticipate, how far down the road you anticipate fully realizing, they said, 800,000 a year in savings? Have you calculated that out?
There's a lot that depends on that in terms of how soon we can place those people. You know, when you look at, how do we determine that amount? You know, when you look at, you know, the principal position at the elementary level in our district costs about $110,000. You know, when you look at, you know, the principal position at the elementary level in our district costs about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. You know, and then you have the office assistants, the custodians that aren't needed, the BICS, behavior interventions, you know, those will no longer, you know, be needed at Bridgepoint now.
But they'll be needed someplace else. And they'll still be making the same salary or close to it.
No, because those schools, Franklin Square and Riverside already have those positions, they already have those people in place.
If you increase, but what I just thought I heard was that if we increase the number of students in a school, then we also have to possibly increase the number of janitorial staff, maintenance staff, and teachers to be able to cover that extra student work.
It's based off of square footage, so the square footage of Riverside immediately is not going to change, and then obviously the square footage of Franklin Square will not change. So, one day shift custodian and then two in the evenings is still what we would realize, and we've already received, well before this cost saving reduction plan, we've received notice that one of the custodians at Franklin Square has already tendered his retirement notice. So that will be an immediate position that we, through attrition, will have a spot for someone to go to from Bridgepoint.
So that's why I'm asking, do we have any idea how long it's going to be before we fully realize the eight hundred thousand?
I would say.
Five years?
Yeah, I I wouldn't say five, at least a couple, you know, hopefully, you know, sooner than that, but one or two years, I would believe. Because we, we have so many positions opening up in the district that we can move those individuals into and not have to rip them or or let them go or anything like that.
Right, and just for the public's sake, that they don't see it, all the board members see it, I'm sure everybody in the corporation sees it. Every week, there's probably about six or seven or more openings that show up that were, that somebody's looking for, somebody to do something.
Especially on the classifieds, uh.
I want to clarify one thing, uh, because the twenty-six to one ratio is going to be in the next topic we see, John. Um, Mr. Freeman, I know you're new to the board, so you're asking a lot of questions that, um, that you're wanting to learn. So our twenty-six to one ratio is our, what we say our average sizes. When you, um, when you give the principals, okay, here's your twenty-six to one allotment, um, they have to go, then go back and they, the principals are the ones that make the decision of like, okay, well, it looks like we're going to need four sections of fifth grade, three sections, and oh, if I had one more teacher, this would be great, but I'm going to have to make a choice now. Do I have a split classroom where they're teaching second and third, or do I just make this fourth grade class a little bit larger and let that second grade class be a little smaller because you only get so many? So, that, when the dust settles on that, what ends up happening is you have class sizes like, okay, all the fifth grade classes are actually sitting at twenty-nine because they're older, they have less, um, um, sensory needs and social emotional needs or whatever, so we can usually handle a larger class size while I'm going to let my third, uh, my third grade or my first grade sit at the twenty-four because, um, they do have more of those needs. So those are the types of decisions we're made, that's why when we say twenty-six to one, somebody else might say, wait a minute, there's thirty kids in my class. Yeah, but somewhere there's a class that's a little bit, that when you run the average, it comes out to be twenty-six, so.
Bridgepoint, are there any other Title I schools in GCCS besides Bridgepoint?
Um, yeah.
Most of them are, with the exception of about three.
Because somebody asked me like about that as far as.
Yeah.
If Franklin Square or Riverside were as well, because that would be, uh, title, Title I funding that would be quite missing out on that administration, so I was asking.
Yeah, most of our buildings are, we just have a very few that are not.
Riverside and Franklin Square already receive Title I support, so if anything, when Dr. Hartlitt runs her formulas that the federal government gives her, um, proportionate amounts would also follow. Again, that's going to come in that, settle the dust on who's going where, what are our demographics now, what is the qualified and forward, so.
Our only elementary schools that are not Title I are TJ and UTEC.
TJ and UTEC, okay.
And I thought, I thought Riverside, uh, uh, our typical two.
There's only two that are not, the rest receive credit.
Any other questions on Bridgepoint? No, all right, we'll move on to the next item and the, uh.
Is there a plan for Bridgepoint property here?
Not yet, um, you know, there's, there's certain statutes and guidelines you have to follow, um, you know, once the board approves, uh, that, that, you know, the redistricting, you know, the redistricting of the students from Bridgepoint to Franklin Square and Riverside, and we would start that process of looking for potential buyers and, you know, and and that situation, you know, as fast as possible.
Since Mr. Freeman brought it up, I'm going to go ahead and address the elephant that's in the room, some of the, some of the parents are out there because I've been hit with this by four or five people. There are rumors that there is a developer that has come to us on the back channels to try and get that property, and I just wanted to verify that that's not the case.
No, we haven't had a developer come to us. We, we did have an organization reach out to us, uh, that they had heard about the potential of us doing this, uh, that it's a nonprofit, you know, and and we had a brief conversation with them, but there's, we have, but no developers have reached out to us, it was a nonprofit organization.
Okay, I just wanted to make your, sure, that's lovely.
Good evening, board. Hindsight, uh, prior to finalizing this presentation, I wish, um, we would have shifted one word. Um, the Court and Porter closure is not technically a closure, it is a relocation of a program. So, um, I want to make sure that I reiterate that the program itself is not going anywhere, um, other than down the road. Um, so right now, are, we have approximately forty-two students who we serve at our Court and Porter, uh, building, which is located, um, right beside our Franklin Square Elementary Building. Um, Court and Porter has been in existence for, I believe we are on year thirty-seven. It was initially started through a grant, um, and, um, from there, it has flourished for thirty-seven more years. Um, I believe our, the renovation that we did on the current building was approximately ten years ago, does that sound about right, Gina? Um, and we, um, have been able to do incredible things with some of our most difficult students within the district. So our current, um, stu-, or staff members there, we currently have four teachers in place, one of those teaching positions has remained unfilled after, um, a teacher left us early in the school year. Um, so we have four teachers, um, with the program relocating, we would look at placing our high school program at Jeffersonville High School, and our middle school program right now at River Valley Middle School. I will tell you, we're kind of in the early stages of mapping out exactly, um, what those, where those locations would be within each of those buildings. Um, but the staff who are currently in place, um, three of those staff members would follow the program. Um, I will tell you too that I've had some just initial conversations with teachers, um, and they have been in, for the most part, pretty positive about the shift, and if anything, they're, they're looking forward to more opportunities for their students. Um, right now, being in a separate location, although wonderful things happen there with students, we are limited. Um, so our ultimate goal, anytime a student is placed at Court and Porter for their needs, our ultimate goal is to get them back to their home school. So research shows us that students learn best in their home schools around general education years. So we try very, very hard to do that. Sometimes we are successful, sometimes students do remain at Court and Porter for, um, beyond, or through graduation. Um, being at Jeffersonville High School or River Valley Middle School would allow us to transition students back, um, a little more easily. So there's logistics that are usually involved with that transition, sometimes it's transportation, sometimes I can only hand, handle a short period of time. So being within that building would allow our students to do that a little more easily. Um, if you think about some of the opportunities that are also available, um, I'll take Jeff High, for example, has a wonderful welding program, a radio TV program. Those are things right now that our Court and Porter students don't technically have the opportunity to do because they are in a separate location. So this would, um, give them more opportunities and with the graduation pathways would allow them to have more access to those courses. So with that, we would take two teachers, um, to Jefferson, the Jeffersonville High School location as well as four paraeducators. The middle school program would have one teacher and two paraeducators. Um, the alternative program is also housed at Court and Porter, that would transition back to Parkview Middle School, um, which is where it was housed before it moved to the Court and Porter building last year. Um, a special education supervisor would also oversee the program, um, for a portion of the day or for a portion of her time. Um, we feel like this is, is pretty important to maintain the integrity of the program and to continue some of the professional development that supports those teachers. Um, this eliminated, this would eliminate one principal position, one administrative assistant, um, two teachers, but reminder that one of those is currently unfilled. That fourth teaching position, we would look at licensures, and again, it would not be, um, a riff of any sort, that teacher would be placed elsewhere depending on their licensure. Um, six paraeducators, um, again, no one would lose their position, four of those are currently unfilled, so we would place two paraeducators where we currently have openings. One counselor and, uh, one behavior intervention coordinator. And again, no one will lose their job, it will be placement through attrition. Uh, potential cost savings for the relocation of Court and Porter would be approximately five hundred thousand dollars per year. Questions?
You know, you know that this one is, this one touches at my heart. However, uh, I'm glad by the way you explained it, it is not a closure, it is moving the program. I know that we moved the alternative education out of their own building into the schools and initially, or at least early on, I talked to a couple of those teachers and they, they liked it. Now, I guess my questions are, the Court and Porter education program will be housed in an area at Jeffersonville High School for the high school students. And that area, will that area, they'll have an outside entrance, it's only outside entrance, and then I take it that area, they will not be allowed in the building because that's usually a big part of students who are there. Sometimes they're not allowed on our other campuses due to situations that have gotten them to Court and Porter.
Right.
Um, also, um, I guess my, my concern about this movement is that they do have what they need, I know they have more opportunities educationally, uh, just by being in that building. Be able to take advantage of those educational opportunities, um, will there be some sort of, will they get a sign outside so everybody knows that's Court and Porter? And also, there, will there be a timeout room renovated for them that is similar to what they have now that is very much needed in that program?
Yes, so I, um, just this past week, I did, um, an initial walkthrough of Pam Hall at Jeffersonville High School. Um, the wing that she has somewhat designated for this move, um, could not have worked out any better. Um, it has everything imaginable, including an outside entrance where buses can drop right at that location. Um, there is a hallway where we would probably have to construct a wall of some sort, um, to keep that entrance into the general hallway separate. Um, there's a separate teacher lounge, there are additional classrooms that can be used as, I believe, Court and Porter's, um, term that they use as a reset room. So if I need to reset, uh, behaviorally, I can go to this location for a period of time and then re-enter back with my peers. Um, so there would be space for that, there is seclusion space, all of that is laid out very well. Um, and yes, we have already talked about signage, bringing some of the walkers over, so yes, we do intend for it to be, um, completely separate. One thing I think we were pretty firm on is that we did not want this relocation to be just the addition of a special education classroom, um, at Jeffersonville High School or River Valley Middle School. Um, so yes, all of those things are already, um, being discussed, and, um, both of the principals, um, at River Valley and at Jeffersonville High School are very, very welcoming. They're welcome to this idea, and they are, um, obviously accepting of any student, but they're, they're excited about the opportunity to bring the program into their building.
And what about restrooms?
Yes.
Kitchen area?
Separate restaurant, separate kitchenette, separate teacher lounge, um, and even a space that we are looking at for a, a separate cafeteria space. And I would be happy to, to walk you through it sometimes because I was, I was pretty excited when, when I got to for it.
Thank you.
Roughly with the five hundred thousand on this one, how much percentage goes to, uh, the reduction of the, the, the positions? And how much of it goes towards, or is attributable to actually taking the building out offline?
Um, Chad, I may have to help, have you help me on that building, because I know we've, we've talked about.
We have about, we have about thirty thousand dollars in utilities, you know, at Court and Porter, uh, at the site that it's currently located. So you, you can anticipate it'll be up to Mr. Loffner and our team and then the board approval to determine what we're going to do with that building, uh, if and when the cost saving reduction plan is approved by the board. So for that, that purpose, we don't, we don't anticipate it going completely dark, I think we have some plans for that. You know where it's continuously located, right beside Franklin Square, so it may be that the, that the district chooses to do a not-so-long-term lease with, with organizations or with, uh, private, uh, entities in such a way that if we do realize the growth and see some growth of the downtown revitalization of Jeff, then we have options there for, uh, Court and Porter to become an extension of Franklin Square Elementary School perhaps. But those are, those are long-term things that we would anticipate, but we will, we will more than likely, I think, look at maintaining and keeping that Court and Porter space.
If, so, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is roughly some, some numbers of percentages I could use whenever we're looking at some other facilities, Bridgepoint specifically also. Uh, do you, and you may be able to, hopefully you would be, you may not be able to right now, do you have roughly a square foot cost per year for utilities in buildings, in our, in our older buildings? And the maintenance and you, and janitorial cost per year in these older buildings?
Yeah, I, we've got those, I don't have those right here in front of me, but I can get those to the board.
Because that tells us, we're going to save right now.
Sure.
I can tell you, on average, we spend seventy-six to eighty thousand dollars a year on utility cost of Bridgepoint on merger. On average. And I think one of the questions you're asking is, you know, uh, the savings, where's coming from? You know, there will no longer be a need for principal, counselor, BIC.
Right.
Office assistant, you know, and, uh, as many pairs, you, you know, there's.
Right, I can see, I can see where we're going to have not that many people, I, I'm not speaking out of school here, but obviously if you have a principal that's no longer a principal, I would hope that their salary would maybe reflect the difference also, so we have some savings on that as well. Not because I wish anybody to lose their money, but, you know.
Yeah, we.
And then I'm trying to also anticipate where, and maybe I need to talk to those for later, whereas if we get into the do ad, we're, we're going to make a plan, we're going to present it to do ad, is that correct?
We will not, no, we will not need to do that.
Okay.
Obviously, we would share it with them, as long as we go down the road of directing this ourselves, you know, we won't have to do that.
I heard that.
You know, share a plan with them, meet with them, but if we keep pushing this problem down the road.
Right.
That's where, that's where it's going potentially.
What I'm concerned with is if we do have to commit, or if we're not making the adjustments fast enough to suit whatever their assessment would be, then if we, because we're talking about some of these being not an immediate savings next July first, you know, it's, obviously because we're talking about Bridgepoint. We're talking a couple of years out before we realize that entire savings, I'm going to say the same thing probably is going to happen with Court and Porter, the relocation of Court and Porter. Would that be fair that it's not going to all, we're arguing that, see that five hundred thousand a year?
Correct, yes, it would be similar to the Bridgepoint situation where all the time.
I'm going to assume that's probably going to be the case across most of the educational services that we're seeing here. And what I may, I guess I'm anticipating is, if we don't move fast enough, we're going to be looking at something else possibly coming down the line from Indianapolis.
No, I don't believe so, because I think they'll see that we're addressing this issue and we're moving in the right direction.
Okay.
And as long as we're addressing it, moving in the right direction, you know, that, that will, uh, comply with what they want to see.
I will leave you with, with one last thought. I recently had a chance to speak with one of the, um, I call her one of the founders of the Court and Porter program, um, who has, you know, been, been through, um, thirty-seven years with the program. She reminded me that when the grant was received, um, to start the program, it was with the intention that some of the great restorative practices that occur there, um, be eventually trickled back out to other buildings. I think this is our opportunity to do that, um, and like Ms. Fitzpatrick pointed out, this program is near and dear to many people's hearts, including my own past directors, parents, students, um, current staff. Um, I think the list would go on and on, but I, I want to reiterate that students will still continue to be served, um, based off of their, their social and emotional needs, but it will be in a different location, and I think we look at it more of an opportunity versus a, a, uh, loss of the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry?
Superintendent.
Yes. Yes.
If I could just interdentize my line here, Bill. This section right here strictly devoted to the education portion.
Right.
The other areas will be forthcoming in the operations side. With utilities, I wouldn't allow this team to consider that yet as a savings for the utilities, because we don't know the duration of how long that is. So those numbers not reflected in this reduction, which is okay, because we're talking about one million only going away. And the reason you want to say that's okay is because you, we're only cutting $6 million, remember? We need to be up at these levels. And so each fund is only experiencing a $3 million reduction. So remember, an education fund, you should be at the $5,000 to $6.5 million. You see what I'm saying? So if those costs start rolling in as savings after we do something with the building, it naturally will start reflecting. We can't promise that savings within a timeframe, because we don't know what the end destiny is with that building just yet. We can't commit to that right at this moment, do you see what I'm saying? So when you're, when you're asking about the utility, not that we have forgotten about it, but it's not saved in the education portion. And we don't know what timeframe really that portion is, with me?
Yes, would that also apply to maintenance and janitorial services for that building too?
Correct, so what happens is, you know, the definition of attrition, we've gotten that pretty well defined, that when people retire or quit, or whatever they want to do, you know, those positions start open. And so when Dr. Shane comes along about that section that directly impacts the operation fund, that's where you're going to start getting those things cleared up. Because of how, you know, we need to go out to and get an RFE to see what kind of full savings that they're going to be looking at. So, so those kind of things will be coming along here shortly. But I didn't want anybody to think that I'm looking at this $500,000 and, you know, whatever, 10% or whatever, you know, $30,000 is part of that amount, right? This is the number of everything to do this program to the level that we're saying that we're going to do.
Okay.
With me? Because I want that savings in the education.
Okay.
Right, this here, alright.
I appreciate, I appreciate, thank you for the clarification, because obviously I-
No, no, that's okay, because it can be confusing, because we're talking about a whole building, there's a lot of moving parts to that. But the numbers that you're seeking are coming at the education, or at the operations portion.
Okay.
Next item on the list, we're going to bring Karen back up for the related arts panel.
Okay. The first couple of sentences here are really, Mr. Freeman, Mr. Paul, because you are new to the board. I don't know if you followed the journey about the related arts proposal last school year. The strategic planning committee that Mr. Lautner put together in the summer 2019 came up with several ideas to feed him. He had several public meetings and we narrowed down some things that we were going to save out of that planning. This, these three slides I present to you tonight are just a synopsis of the five-page presentation that probably took two hours last December to talk through. So that is a public document. Everything about what I'm going to talk about tonight is exactly that proposal. It's just the numbers are adjusted to reflect the different number of buildings. If, if this is assuming, remember, Mr. Lautner said this is, this is not out of cart. This is also adjusted to Bridgepoint wouldn't be served next year. So my bottom line number is different from that proposal, but everything else is the same as that long proposal. Okay, at the beginning of that presentation in December 2019, I said, the strategic planning committee tasked me with two tasks. Can you develop a plan that would save the education fund money? And also improve the equitable opportunities for the related arts programs and consistency across all related arts buildings? And the reason that second one was important is because slowly over time, probably 10, 15, 20 years, maybe longer than that, I don't know, it hasn't been, it hasn't been different 21. The related arts positions have been filled sometimes by purely certified people. A music teacher taught music, a PE teacher taught PE, and art teacher taught art. Certified solely in those areas. In the state of Indiana, you can teach those areas with a general education degree. The general education degree can also teach first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. So principals, given rules in their staffing sheets, made decisions that they felt were best, with great intentions for their culture and their students and their needs. So sometimes they would shift people around. Some, sometimes those particular areas end up having some high turnover. But there are also places in our corporation where the same person's been there for 20 years, teaching, they're purely certified, or they're a general education teacher who has just been doing it that long. So when we talk about the consistency and the equity issues we have in the related arts world across all, then 12 buildings now, we're talking about 11, potentially 10. We see that some schools over that time, because maybe they had that turnover in those positions, didn't write a grant to get a key board, didn't advocate to better their program. Maybe they didn't have a foundation in those areas, and so they didn't, maybe they didn't know what to advocate for or whatnot. So just that's created a situation where, as we audited last year, I think we had one building that didn't even have art for any reason. I think another school didn't have music, because they were using the talents of the people that were in those positions. It was all done with good intentions, but as the district looked, whoa, we need to, we need to improve that equity and that consistency across the district, so that was task number two, okay? Still honoring that there are people who are kind of making things in some areas, so. So given those two tasks, the proposal is that currently we staff at 26 to 1, Mr. Freeman, I can explain that earlier. But for related arts to happen, you need to have more teachers than just your 21, 26 to 1. The related arts teachers have classes that revolve in it all day long and they end up teaching everybody throughout the week, or in six-week spans, okay? So you can't staff them at a 26 to 1 ratio, they serve all the other kids. So our formula has been for a long time, again, I've only been here for 21 years, I don't know when that changed, has been you take your enrollment, divide by 26. And then for schools that were less than 300 in enrollment, you get two teachers as your related arts allotment. If you're over 300, then you get three teachers. And with that plus two or that plus three, you end up making your world go round. You need to make sure all your teachers get their planning time and all your students get art, music, PE, library, and technology, okay? So again, that's an individual logic puzzle that each principal works through based upon their enrollment. This proposal, now I'm going to hit the slide. This proposal would change that formula to divide by 26 and then just do a plus one, regardless of enrollment. Everyone would get plus one certified teacher to kind of help with the related arts realm and serve their students. Then, if they are in enrollment under 300, they get one related arts specialist that can teach their related arts areas. If they're over 300, it would, they would get two. So same number of people in the formula, it's just we're reducing the number of certified people and replacing that with a classified position, therefore reducing costs, okay? I'm going to go on to the next slide, the next, oh, sorry, the next bullet. The next bullet talks about creating four related arts coordinator positions. I have an entire slide devoted to that, so I'm not going to go deep into that bullet right now. But that addresses task number two, how do you create that consistency and equity? The next bullet is, the math I just explained would mean that across the buildings, we would end up hiring approximately 19 related arts specialists, which means that approximately, as I said earlier, this isn't going to happen overnight, because we're going to do it through attrition. But if it did happen overnight, it would, it would mean that there would be 19, approximately 19s, less teachers and 19 new certified or classified specialists, okay? If that happened overnight, this is the goal. What we also do here though, is right now our media clerks are a job description all their own. They run our media centers, our libraries. They also run our library classes. And in most cases, they also help with teaching our technology classes, which, by the way, starting July 1 to 2021, all K8 students have to have an intentional curriculum in computer science. We've been working with those teachers or that staff this year to increase that. But I just described the weight that's on the, the lack of the media clerks. And they make, they make a lower wage than we wish we could pay them. Again, we can't afford to give them raises. The related arts specialists would be making $17 per hour, that's in our proposal. Out of the savings that we would create by doing this swap out of 19 positions, we would also like to cut into that savings to bring our 10 or 11 media clerks up to $17 an hour. Because essentially, they are already doing what we would be asking the related arts specialists to do. And we don't want that inequity to be created once, once we hired our very first related arts specialist, okay? So there's that bullet. That leaves, of all the related arts, a lot of teachers. That leaves 10 of the certified teachers still in the building serving their students. So this was kind of, if you were on the journey with us last year, we ran several scenarios. This was kind of like that compromise in the middle, where we didn't just take them all, we left some flexibility. Next slide. So overall, our bottom line would be a conservative cost savings of $630,000 per year annually. Now, that's our savings after, if that number would be higher, because remember, task number one was how do you save money? Well, I can do it, I can flip them out, we can save more money than $630,000 a year. I can't do number two, how do you provide consistency and equity? Unless we invest some of that savings before we, to put it in the education fund, unless we invest it back to fix those equity issues. So here's what we plan to do before we get to the 630. So this is, we're going to take this out and still get $630,000 of savings. We're going to have stipends for those special area staff members so that we can maybe increase the number of like art shows, PE carnivals, evening performances and things, special events like that that we're having. Post-temin, of course, we want to increase those. The cost reduction includes the cost of the coordinator. I talked about four certified people helping us run this program across 10 buildings. That is an expensive price tag, but I can't do number two, improve the consistency unless I have those masters of their craft helping. And the savings pays for them, we still save $630,000 a year after we pay for these coordinators. It will, that will help us provide that consistency in the training. And that's those last two bullets about reiterating the bringing the media clerks up to the specialist area. The bottom bullet, it creates another career path for our classified staff. Our classified staff work hard and they make the least when you add up all the pay scales. Something that makes retention of our classified staff is if you come in at one of the lower areas and you're really great with students, maybe you're clerk four, maybe you're related arts specialist down the road, there's a career, there's a new career path for you. Oftentimes, our classified staff only have the career path to make money if they apply for one of those positions in this building, you know, through the clerical realm or the business office and things like that. But this creates a school-level career path that they get to increase their livelihood, so. Okay, next slide. I devoted a whole slide to this, because you'll hear me speak passionately about this. I can save money if this is voted on. I cannot do the increase in equity and consistency unless I have help that gets paid for out of the savings. These four coordinators, art, music, PE, and technology, would be job embedded professional development teachers. I call them the teachers of the teachers and the specialists. So they would spend their time writing lesson plans, because related arts specialists, because they don't have a teaching degree, they have to be guided and said the lesson planning and build upon. Not that they won't build their own talent and on their own and become better at doing that stuff over years, but that has to be under the licensed teachers' planning. So we need that. If you can imagine having that many brand-new all at once, and maybe some of them have worked in schools and some of them haven't, that's a learning curve to the launch. And so I would want the masters of their craft teaching them how to teach those classes. So they would spend their time planning lessons, helping coordinate those special events. Maybe some of our related arts specialists have never put on a concert before, you know, or planned an art show. You know, those logistical things, you can't assume people know how to do that. So they would be there to guide them and tell them, you know, everything they need to do. I put a sample schedule on there. This is just a sample, basic content building, of course, this can, this can vary, because what we would want to do is intentionally schedule them into buildings for a half-day each when they're going to sites. And they would be there for three classes. And my desire is that they would spend two classes actually modeling and teaching the kids, so that they get to, the specialists who are learning get to learn classroom management techniques. They get to see it. You can have a training in this building on slides. It is different when you get to see it in action with kids. And that works with our teachers too. We can have all meetings in the world, we can with slides, but when you actually have somebody push in and actually show you the techniques and try it out, it's just more powerful. Then, I want, of those three class periods, I want their coordinating time to fit on the planning time of the specialists, so that they can sit and have those coaching conversations. That's not something you can do while kids are in the room. And they need to have those powerful conversations. They can also help them take inventory, really see what the inequities are in terms of the equipment and so on and so forth. Okay. There's the information, and again, this is a synopsis from a full five pages that we did in December 2019. So if you have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
On the related arts specialists, you said they're going to be $17 an hour?
Yes.
Will they get benefits?
Yes. And I'm glad you brought that up since Perkins, because one of the questions that we hit last year was, you know, in our, in our area, it's hard, if you might, to have a little bit of turnover in our low, lower-paid positions. And as Mr. Lautner said, we don't opt for like chocolate or make it to the west. But they are running this model, but they do not provide benefits. And we believe that that benefits package-
Right.
-will make it more retainable, so.
Absolutely, I appreciate that. The other thing I'm having a really hard time with, and I did the last time we discussed this, is the four coordinators. You really believe that'll be full-time jobs for all four of those?
I will be their direct supervisor, and I will have high expectations. And not only that, but I mentioned that while some areas have had turnover and, you know, some inequities have developed over a long period of time, we have masters of their craft also in the mix who do an excellent job. We're going to hire out of that pool. Mr. Lautner has always encouraged us to seek first here before we, you know, before we look elsewhere. And I know, I'm confident that when you're the master of your craft, your work ethic doesn't allow you to become a waste of money. I mean, I feel like they will be so valuable. Now, years down the road, if we get to the point where there's not a lot of turnover in our specialist positions, everybody's rocking and rolling, I'm keeping tabs of what's going on and the need, we can read out, are we at such a stable situation? We've got a good professional development line and actionable plan in place that now we can maybe have them teach again and go back to maybe just a stipend and some release time to train when we get new staff members? That would need to, you know, stabilize. But that's something we could look at in the future. But I strongly believe I can't do task number two without their help.
So if I'm elementary school A, and I have a certified teacher, maybe an art teacher, maybe a music teacher, maybe a music teacher, just going to be a certified teacher. Do those coordinators have any interaction with them?
Absolutely, so, right now, so, also again, to our new, our early board members, one of the things that we did this year to take a step towards the consistency is we developed four stipends for coordinators to be as an extra duty. They have been writing pacing guides, you know, we've had pacing guides for many areas for a long time. They already see them as the, I equate it to, you know, there's only one of your kind of teacher in your building, third grade has a team, fourth grade has a team, we don't get to collaborate. It's almost like they're the grade level leader for music, they're the grade level leader for art. But they've been coordinating, collaborating, and meeting at least quarterly to get on the same page. They're already seeing, the people who sit in those positions now, I'm not saying we would do a search and do a fuller interview process for the full-time teaching positions. But- But, um, that type of coordinator position is already seen as a leader amongst our staff. We have teacher leaders in all of our departments. Um, they would not be their supervisor and that brings up a good point. Our principals would be evaluating the specialists. These people are their coaches.
Okay. So just a couple more points. If the, um, we're still in this same school, uh, but I am, uh, the music coordinator, Kevin Perdido, I couldn't think which one to pick. I'm the music coordinator. How many staff am I responsible for coordinating?
The music coordinator? Um, well, a minimum of ten, but it could be twelve or thirteen because you look at every building it's supposed to is different.
Well, didn't you say you were gonna have, uh, nineteen related art specialists?
Yes.
So would I have nineteen people that I have to coordinate with?
No, because that's how many you would have across your ten buildings, but not all nineteen of those are gonna teach music.
Ah.
So some of the nineteen, maybe twelve of them do because that's the schedule they have, but I can't see a scenario where all nineteen of those would
So I'm still not understanding how our kids are gonna get the program. If, if I'm this elementary school and I've got a certified teacher there and let's say that's a PE teacher. And then I have three or two related art specialists. How am I gonna get all four of those areas taught?
I thought I could answer that. We have that situation now where, um, you have, uh, you have five special areas that you gotta get in every week and you only have three or four staff members. So what happens in every single one of our buildings is that your designated main area is what you teach. And then one of those areas gets broken up amongst y'all. And usually it's technology because, um, that, that, I'll be honest, like in terms of technology and until we've been analyzing these computer sciences coming down the pipe, um, it's really just been here fifty-four, let's work one, you know, it hasn't been intentional about coding and computers, okay? So does that make sense?
Yes. So I can say, even though we would not have, I mean, right now, we don't have certified teachers in those areas in every school.
No.
And, and I think, I think our, I mean, I was a teacher and I believe that certification means something and it means something very important. But we don't have that now. We, you know, we have PE teachers teaching art or, or something, you know? And I think that we need to help our parents understand that those related art areas will certainly be provided to our students. Yeah. It may be a certified teacher, it may be a specialist.
Specialist coach. This is, I'm sorry. This is a very much a model that a lot of teacher ed programs are using now. They're, they're basically putting people in clinical positions with supervisors and it's kind of a gradual release. And, and I see this being a, a really practical way to get, um, our specialists up to speed and still not feel like it's gonna, you know, it's all do or die, you know? And, and again, it's an opportunity for them to maybe reinvent their career. Um, so I, I really want people to also recognize that certification today is a little different than certification used to be. So, you know, there's teacher education programs out there that you can get online that you don't, you have student teaching, but it's not near the depth of what lobs in this room and a lot of teachers out there watching. So it's, it's really a, a, a good thing, I think, to look at this. Thank you.
Uh, most of my, uh, questions that I have been getting has been from the teachers and parents about concerns of, number one, what would the impact be to the certified positions? And if so, would they be like the others, you know, reassigned through attrition? And also are there gonna be any cuts to programs? Plus, uh, on the other side from the parent's perspective, let's say I have a child who is in band at Carview. Uh, I guess walk us through the changes that my child would face going to band. Would he have like a new teacher and would that teacher be certified or would this be a program specialist?
I'm, I'm glad you asked that because this is only for the elementary schools. So, um, six through twelve are still going to be maintained by certified teachers. And it, it would be hard for us to do that because, um, of the, the standards and the sophistication. Yes. So.
And to answer your one question, you know, the certified people that are currently in these positions will be reassigned into a different position in the corporation when available. We're not going to riff or, oh, cut or anything like that. And I will tell you that, once in our neighbors to the west, they did that. They actually riffed and just cut them all.
Yep.
You know, and we're not going to do that.
One other question about, you mentioned attrition, we're gonna do this through attrition. So we have it all around. Explain that a little bit more.
Okay, sure. So, um, it is such a logic puzzle, not only the district, it's also, as I explained earlier in teacher strategy, it's, it's an individual logic puzzle per, um, per building. We have buildings where almost all of their related arts class are purely certified. So it, it might happen slower for them. Um, then we have buildings where all of their related arts, a lot of teachers are general classrooms. So as each, um, as we receive our retirement notices or resignation notice, um, I don't, I don't, you know, we're not gonna startle it by like, you know, in the middle of February or something like that, that's starting to happen, that we, as we look at our, our staffing, we'll say, okay, we just had a PE opening. Let's look at our, at our PE teachers, um, let's see if we can place one of those in that middle school opening and then that opens up a spot where we can provide a specialist. Um, PE is actually the, the area that I think will go the slowest. We have the highest number of pure certified, we have six. Uh, we really don't have that many others. We have, um, pure certification, music, we only have one. We have a couple that have something else on their license. Um, art certification, pure, we only have one. We have another one that has another something on their license.
So you're saying there's only six, seven, eight, maybe nine?
Purely certified.
And we're gonna have ten positions?
We're gonna have ten allotted positions.
I mean, each school have a certified person, so if we've only got nine or so now, then all of those certified folks would keep the certified position in the area?
Well, that isn't necessarily true because we can't have, um, you know, some schools, we don't necessarily wanna bop somebody out from their, um, from their school, just, oh gosh, I'm trying to frame this the way you're asking it. Um, I, the, the ten certified people who stay in their current positions, um, may or may not be purely certified based upon what's going on at that building and who the other people are that they're sitting next to on their related art field. Because as we, our goal is to make, get it down to one per building. So if everyone on their staff is purely certified, two of them will end up getting placed eventually. Does that make sense? So if the nine of you that are purely certified, two or three of them might be at one building.
Now?
Yes. Yes. And then there are many buildings that none of them are. They are all general elementary.
Okay.
So.
It takes me a long.
That's okay. The way you framed it, I was like, I, I wanna make sure I had it clear. I wasn't at first, so.
I didn't know there were multiple certified teachers in our buildings per.
And that goes back to, I'm sorry, but the inequities and inconsistencies that have been in place that just weren't really realized. And now when we go to try to shift this to make it more equitable, all these things become variables.
You mentioned that the, uh, related art specialists, certain, the ones we're gonna be hiring, you're gonna, the starting, the starting range is seventy dollars per hour, right? What's their benefit package gonna be worth?
Uh, for sure. Is that something you can answer?
Well, it's gonna depend on whether they take family insurance versus individual and what kinds of other things, um, that they end up picking up. So we usually figure that benefits cost around twenty percent of the salary, of the income salary, so.
So their benefit package is only worth about three, three fifty or so?
I have that to do with that.
Right. Ten percent's dollar seventy, so I'm down on that, that's the, you know, two, about three forty, so only twenty percent.
Mr. Hawkins, um,
It seems low to me.
When they're doing general budgeting, um, they usually estimate thirty percent.
Okay.
Thirty percent is the general, general cost of benefits. That takes into account whether they have a fluctuation between single and family or what other benefits that they participate in.
Okay.
So I stick to the thirty percent. Our, our contracts that do that within the district have a forty-one and a half percent cost to the district on benefits.
That's average.
On our other, on our other employee groups. So what I have to do budgetarily to take those considerations in between single and family, what in first plan that they go into, my averages, about thirty percent, and that's pretty industrial, that's a, that's an industry stats, the average for not just school districts, but also offsite school districts.
Well, the reason I was asking, I'm used to, I mean, my, my benefit package is worth right at twenty dollars an hour. And I'm not, I'm not nearly the top on a lot of, you know, some trades are considered higher than that. So that's why I was trying to look at that because that also is a sales point whenever we're trying to do this to bring people in. You know, you're getting not only this wage, but you're also getting benefits worth this much also, so.
Okay. I have a question. Um, is it, isn't it, you know, this is one of the things that, you know, through some of the emails we're getting, you know, again, just like last year, don't cut our, our related arts programs and we're not going to cut them. Now, isn't it true that the state does not require these things at the elementary level?
Correct. They're recommendations.
Right. They're recommendations, but they don't require art and music at the elementary level. I don't know about the PE, but.
No. Right now, uh, actually, if everything, we talked about, I believe in the requirement is as a dilapidation, you have to do the computer science course.
Right. Okay. So I guess I wanna point out to parents, to the public, we're not cutting them. And at the same time, we are above the state recommendations. Uh, you know, we don't have plans to cut those things. They're too valuable to an overall education to the overall student. Um, I know that, you know, we go back and forth and people ask questions and it's like, but that's not a certified teacher. And I think last year when we did this, we learned a lot about the program that we had going on. First of all, the inequities. And secondly, what a lot of people didn't know was we have general education teachers teaching art. We have general education certified teachers teaching music. Okay? You would not want me teaching those things to your kids, I'm just saying. Hand turkeys only go so far. And, you know, I'm a big believer that teachers are born, not made. I mean, I think you've got to have some kind of, you know, I don't know, inclination, aptitude, whatever it is to be a teacher. You know, you could take people and show them the slide shows and sit there with them and you cannot make them into something they're not. I think I would get this as an opportunity to get some people in our community, um, who have an art background, who have a music background, who've worked with kids before, um, you know, and, and they can do that. And, uh, if, if they're, if they're artists and they're, that's what they wanna be and they wanna do their own art in their own studio, they gotta pay the bills, you know? And sometimes it's very difficult for people in those art and music fields who are, are wanting, wanting to do their, their own personal art, uh, to get a job. I mean, they could get a job, but something that allows them some time, something that allows them also to be doing a job that is related to what they wanna do outside of that classroom. So I, I thank you for last year and this year, all the work you did and the way you can explain it, you know, because it is, it's a, it's a logic puzzle and thanks a lot.
How often do teachers travel to, from one school to another right now?
Are you talking about related arts or just in general?
In general.
Um, it's, it's sparingly, but it happens. For example, um, at Charlestown High School, Middle School, this is just one of the things I lived it, uh, they have a music position that teaches music and both, so they spend half a day in both buildings. And, um, those decisions are usually based upon enrollment numbers in those programs. Maybe you have enough to serve a half day. Oh, good, this will need a half day too. And then we pair them up. But that happens, um, far less than you, you would think. We have very few positions.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like now it wouldn't be happening. Because, uh, this is where I was looking at the coordinator schedule, do they build from the one school to the other, like one school to the other, one school to the other?
Oh, yes, that's what we do. Yes.
Yeah. So even though I see that you've, uh, put a lot of the schools that are closer together in the same day.
Yes, that's why.
Um, I just see a potential for like, you know, that, that to me is a risk if you're going from one place to another, especially where I come from, was I think this is Parkwood to Franklin Square. Um, yeah, so like how far is that? That's, that to me is a bit of a far travel and that's a, that's a risk to me. So like, you know, and also are we paying these teachers their mileage? Even though like TJ Wilson is not that, not that far.
Yeah.
Uh, but from Parkwood to Franklin Square, that's, I mean, it's not far, but it's a decent stretch.
Yes. So, um, I did have that in the figures of last year's proposal. And actually when I added it up, it was less than you thought. I don't have that memorized off the top of my head, but I can share those numbers. Um, in reality, uh, we can pay mileage for that one midday trip. So say somebody lives in Jeffersonville and they've never been visited in Washington Elementary and they get one of these positions. They can't say, well, I don't wanna drive forty minutes, you know, they're, sorry, the trip there is on you. Your midday trip between Charlestown and Pleasant Ridge, that'd be your most expensive because it's about, you know, eleven, twelve miles. Um, all of the Jeffersonville schools, and Mr. Perkins, I can speak to this, um, from personal experience, I have feet bump around a lot between the buildings. Not as much this year, but last year, I mean, sometimes I was in three or four a day. Um, and I can get just about anywhere in five to seven minutes. And that's with the traffic light and the stop sign and honestly, it's, it's no more than like three-ish miles between most of our schools. So, and yes, they can, they can track that, but because you're only talking about two or three miles at a time on those days, it really didn't add up to much to eat into the savings, so.
Ms. Helfman may have to answer this, may have to answer this one, but whenever I move from one job to another, I'm off the clock because I'm on my own driving, I'll be in my own vehicle. I mean, the company very, makes very sure of that. Because if I'm on the clock, then their insurance has to pick it up.
Liability.
And liability, there's liability in there. And if we factor that into all this shit, if we're gonna be paying them for on the clock.
Um, I, I pause on that for just a second to make sure I finish, uh, Mr. Freeman's because, um, your question I, I originally thought was about classroom teachers. If you look at our OT, our PT, um, half of Brooks Department, they, we can't serve our kids. It's actually more cost effective to do it that way than to get each building their own OT, PT, whatever. So classroom teachers, it's done very sparingly. The number that we already have doing that is actually larger than what I thought you were originally asking. So I just wanna finish that thought. Okay, now, Mr. Hawkins, um, that would be a question probably for our CFO.
So this, this practice of going, you know, point five OT to, for one school, point five to yet another is very common. So no, we do not cover that teacher when they're going to work. So when I get up in the morning and I drive here, you know, so.
You're on your dime.
I, I'm on my own dime, right? But when I go from here to have a meeting at the high school, right?
Yep.
Um, I'm still working for the school district, but I drive my vehicle.
Okay.
And whenever you drive your vehicle, drive it, your own vehicle has no bearing on a school operation because your own insurance takes care of your own insurance. Now, I know you're saying no, but that's how we, how we operate, okay?
My insurance doesn't cover me when I'm driving, I don't know about what your, what your.
Their insurance. That is true. Like you can ask your pizza delivery driver, their insurance, like.
We pay, we pay mileage, okay? And that is on, that's where that portion comes in, is through the mileage. And so, you know, that, that is their insurance. We have, all schools, all. We have, all schools, all schools...
But they're on, but they're on our time, won't that be a workers' comp claim?
Yes.
There we go.
But I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going, I'm going, I will do further research, but I'm going to challenge that, because, again...
It's their contract.
Right, uh, you know, again, you know, when they're driving their own vehicle, the district does, generally, school districts do not have a provision to cover them, that's why we pay the mileage, right?
Okay.
So that's where I will do research on our workers' comp, I'll do research on our, our property value, because we don't re, we only report drivers to our insurance for those who are driving our corporation vehicles. That's why I, I will look into that for you.
I figure something we ought to look at.
But...
Especially the workers' comp side.
We've only had one in a lot of years, so...
And that just said that that wouldn't happen, but I'll be happy to research that, and I will answer that and send that to the board all collectively.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to create some monster here, but he broke up something I already thought of.
No, the private industry and public education, two different kinds of concepts. So I'll definitely do all that research and email that out to you, to let you know about coverage, when you do a halftime OT at one school, halftime at another school.
Okay, thank you.
Well, anything in this model you just described to us, have halftime teachers or driving? Other than the supervisors, the teachers or the...
Um, not by design. Um, I, I don't want to rule out that if some creative awesomeness can happen between two schools, we wouldn't allow that, um...
But mostly they'll be housed at a school building, and that would be their...
Yes, yes.
Except for the supervisor.
Yes, okay.
Any other questions?
I'll take one of the things to this plan, and I'm just like to add it up, but when we looked at this in two thousand nineteen, what we found is disparaging, disparities between two different, in our class and one elementary school might not be close to the, our class in terms of learning competencies, that sort of thing, or activities. And this does allow for the curriculum to be aligned more closely from schools, who will cross, you know, horizontally, and I think that's huge, because we unloaded that in nineteen, and you hear this is going to bring a lot tighter together, so I just want that to be said, oh wow, I think it's important.
Yeah, and this year, we mandated, just to take that step in the equity direction...
Right.
That every student receive at least thirty lessons in all five of the areas, which is one hundred and fifty days, which means each school did have thirty days to play this sort of speed, in case they had a sacred tradition...
True.
...of a program that they wanted to throw in, that was outside of our pacing yard. Um, so we did take that step, and will maintain that expectation, so...
Mr. Freeman?
Uh, I got just one last question. So it's because of school choice, we're in competition with all of our neighborhood school districts. How many of our neighborhood school districts are using a plan like this?
Several, New Albany Floyd does.
Well, there are all county with, but we have Sellersburg, we have Clarksville, we even have, like, Young Madison Consolidated out near Pasco, much.
I would say that, for, how many of those are using this type of model? I would say all of them to some extent. You know, I, I've even talked to, I've talked to, well, she has resigned now, but Clem, you know, Silver Creek, when this came up last year, I had several superintendents come to me, uh, at different conferences and say, uh, we're already doing that, we did that years ago, uh, and some of them actually told me, we just did it and didn't tell the board, you know, and, and made the change. Um, and went to a classified specialist versus a certified. We try to be very transparent in what we're trying to do, uh, with this, but I can tell you, most, if not all, of the districts are using this at some, to some extent. I don't have the actual number or data, you know, I didn't call them on ask them, but...
To me, it's, it's a missed opportunity that we've missed over the last couple of years to advertise that, that we have nothing but teasers in our classrooms as opposed to classifieds that have...
Well, yeah, and, and I'll tell you this, ten, twelve years ago, when New Albany Floyd went to this model, our leadership in this district thought we were going to get all these students from New Albany Floyd, because they weren't going to have certified people anymore, and we were. Well, it didn't happen. We, we didn't have an onslaught of elementary students coming over here, you know, to, to, because of that reason. You know, our, some of our leadership thought that would happen, but it didn't. Any other? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, para adjustment for cost savings. Um, we believe that through, uh, reduction in the number of para positions in the district, uh, we could get a cost savings of around three hundred thousand dollars. Um, there would be two approaches to this. Number one, we already have currently about fifteen to twenty para positions open right now. Typically, at any given time, even in a normal year, uh, we have ten to twelve open. They're very hard to fill, because our pay rate is so low, it's hard to find people to fill those para positions. Uh, and we haven't been able to give them raises over the years, uh, that they deserve, you know, so we lose a lot, there's a high turnover rate in that area. You know, so through the approach of, uh, reducing some para positions, and we're not going to riff for fire anyone, or let them go away, but, you know, we have positions that are open that we could reduce without letting anybody go. And then also looking at the potential of making some of our para positions part-time, and, and still keep some of them full-time, we think we can get a cost savings of three hundred thousand dollars in doing that. Yes, any question?
How many para positions right now are unfilled?
Um...
Because you said we had six from quarter to quarter, right?
Yes.
So like, how many total do we have?
It's close to fif- fifteen, twenty.
Yes, probably around fifteen and twenty that are unfilled, and then five or so that are, we haven't, that we couldn't help, for being here.
We're all, almost there, you know, in terms of what our savings would be. Um, you know, like I said earlier, you know, the district, you know, New Albany Floyd, they went to a model where they're, they went to a part-time model where the twenty-nine hours, they don't offer them benefits, uh, they don't have to, um, you know, we could look at that for some of our pairs, you know, we, I think it's about, Patricia, thirty, thirty-five percent of our current pairs do not take our insurance or benefits, you know, and those would be the people we look at, you know...
What's the pay scale for everybody now?
I'm sorry?
The pay scale, starting...
At, at, at...
Oh, yes, I mean, that's why.
Yes. Their whole check goes to that.
He knows.
Yeah. Well, we have a lot of employees, you know, in the para area, that that's why they are workforce, para-wise, to have access to that. And at what point, would they be full-time, would they be thirty-two, thirty-six hours?
The paras are seven and a half hours a day, so...
Before we have to offer them...
About thirty hours.
Thirty hours a week.
At least we want it, like, they can work, and we probably have to...
We would not make all of our paras part-time like New Albany Floyd did, but we could look at some of them, be very strategic. Like, obviously, the pre-K paras, kindergarten paras, uh, we don't want to make them part-time, you know, but we, we could be very strategic in how we look at this, to gain some savings.
Mr. Freeman, you make a very valid point, that, that's part of the offices behind this cost reduction plan, is once we get back to where we need to be, we can build, we can be a bigger, stronger, brighter car, that we can offer more money back to our employees to recruit and retain the strong employees we need and want more candidates, but we have to make these interventions now to better our program.
Those are where then we're cutting even more than what was written there.
Yeah, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, the next item, or any other questions, I'm sorry? All right, what about that? Um, next item, five and a half certified positions through attrition. Now, we've identified, and I, you know, going to be somewhat general here, because I don't want to identify the specific positions, uh, because there are people in those, but we've identified some positions that, you know, five and a half, that will not increase class sizes, that we feel like we can reduce, and move those people into a different position within the corporation. Uh, reduce those positions and save that amount of money, three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Um, really, uh, we looked hard at what we do in each of our schools, and what we could do in the future, and what's needed, what's not needed, and we feel like, you know, when this is what we can do in that regard, you know? But this will not impact class sizes in any of our schools, in terms of this five and a half position, uh, nor will any of the other items in the cost reduction plan. I mean, you keep hearing that out there on social media, that we're going to increase class sizes, or cutting all these teachers, uh, we're riffing teachers. No, we're not, you know, our, we're not doing that, we're not increasing our student-teacher ratio, class sizes will stay the same, uh, that they were this year, uh, we're just trying to do things differently in this corporation, is what we're presenting. Any questions on that?
I'm, I'm going to be dense. I'm trying to understand how, if we have people that were going to move from one position to another position, how it saves us any money, because we still got to pay them.
Well, because they, we're essentially eliminating those five and a half positions that is, that are still in the corporation, they'd be moving to a position that maybe opened up for retirement or resignation, um...
Okay.
That, that's, that's going to stay in the corporation.
If we considered the possibility that we're going to get pushback from the Education Association because you're reducing the number of teachers?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay, all right.
You know, um, but here's, here's where I'll throw in the alternative, you know? Once again, you know, I've heard, we've gotten feedback that some people in the community wanted more options in term, in terms of a cost reduction plan. You know, why are we just being presented one option, you know, to the community? Well, let me tell you what the other option would be, okay? And this does impact, uh, impact the association. For every five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollars that's not approved by the board in this plan, that's ten to twelve teaching positions that we would have to cut, that would impact class sizes. Now, we as a cabinet, I as your superintendent, chose not to go that route. I don't think it was the right route to go. I don't want to have to cut thirty, forty, fifty teaching positions, increase our class sizes, riff teachers and do all that. I've lived that as a principal in this district under previous superintendents, that, that took that route, you know, because every summer, we lose between thirty and forty teachers to retirement, resignation, or they move away, or whatever. We as a cabinet easily could have just said, that's where we're going to get our cost savings from, we're just not going to replace those people that leave us. But that would have increased class size in the schools, it would have probably required principals to eliminate elected some programs in their schools, and I'm sorry, I'm just not about that. That's, that's not the direction I wanted to go with this.
Okay, I, I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm just bringing up a point that I know I'm going to sit up later here, so...
Yeah, okay.
And on that, you, you also have the administration. It's not just teaching.
Yes, right, yeah, and I'll, I'll talk about that at the end. There is a position here at the administration building that we will eliminate, and will require the rest of my team to pick up, um, a lot of those tasks that that person is doing. We're not forcing that person out, you know, when that person leaves or retires, then we just won't fill that position, you know? And I will tell you, that position, you know, it's, it's paid a significant amount of money, you know? So, you know, that's what, that's what we're looking at.
Mr. Hawkins, I want to go back to sooner or later you're going to hear, and I want to know why Mark Fieldhead said, Mark, why haven't you called him yet? Some of us...
Um, now, the, the next group of items are really, we sort of put them in other categories that are smaller items, but, um, obviously, every little bit counts. You know, the first one, uh, bullet point is reduce five classified positions. Once again, I don't want to talk about the specific position, but we've identified five classified positions that we feel like we can eliminate across the district, that aren't going to hurt us as far as the classroom, that experience for students, or hurt teachers in, in that regard, that would save us one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Uh, we've looked at reducing ECA positions. Um, I will tell you, some of those positions are positions that we feel like are redundant, or we have too many of them. A, a good example of that, when I was the principal of Charlestown High School, uh, we had eleven building leadership team, team leader positions. Do we really need eleven? Jeff High has, I think, fifteen. There's other ECA positions like that, that we could reduce, but still have a building leadership team, and still have certain things in those schools, clubs, you know, and that type of thing, and that savings is a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Go ahead. Extracurricular activities, okay? Um, and really, those two things I just talked about, um, affect secondary schools, impact secondary school more than elementary school.
But no programs would be...
No, no programs would be eliminated, no sports would be eliminated. I'll be honest with you, uh, while we were developing this cost reduction plan, we did look at elementary sports. We found that the savings was only going to be around fifty thousand dollars, and the negative impact that would have on us not having elementary sports, uh, we didn't see that as a savings that was worth it, you know, to do that. Um, we think that's a valuable thing, just as the related arts plan, we're not cutting any related arts, you know, uh, just to answer Mr. Paul's question, we're not cutting related arts, we're going to keep related arts. Um, you know, and, and every, every school will have RP, music technology, and all those things, so... Uh, next item, administrative reductions in contracts. We have a few teachers that are on administrative contracts for the rest of this year, and then they go back to a teacher contract, uh, that's a savings of sixty-two thousand dollars once they go back to the teacher contract, and they're not on the administrative contract anymore. Next item, optimize grant spending to offset educational fund. You know, we get a lot of title money, title grants, title funding, uh, we're going to really look at what salaries and benefits we can move into the grant funding, title funding, versus, uh, we've already been doing a lot of that, Dr. Hartlidge has done a great job with that, and we feel like we can optimize that even more, uh, that would save us money out of the education fund. And then certified attrition, what that means is, when somebody retires, somebody resigns and leaves our district, um, or just stops teaching, typically what happens is you hire, um, corporations hire somebody with less experience, which means they cost the district less. You know, that doesn't always happen, don't, don't get me wrong, um, but in most cases it does, you're hiring somebody that's coming out of college with zero years of experience or few years of experience, well, you get a cost savings there, you know? That happens every year, we think that'll be a hundred and fifty thousand for sure, and probably more than that, okay?
Is that counted, is that, is that a pure savings, or could, is that also taken into account in some of these others? Because we've talked about attrition in several places, is this, is this just...
Yeah.
It's by itself, it's a standalone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and a good example is that, of why we did the buyout last year.
Yeah, okay.
Because typically you do a buyout, and thirty people take it, that can retire and have all those years of experience, and are at the top of the scale, you typically end up hiring somebody that's not at the top of the scale, and you get a savings there.
Okay, so this is not about, if somebody retires, we don't replace them?
Right.
This is about, somebody retires, we hire somebody that costs all the money?
Yes, exactly. Any other questions on those other items there?
On the optimizing the grant spending, I know, Ms. Hartlidge, Ms. Hartlidge and I talked about that, I think, a year or so ago, and that's what you've talked about, where the administrative cost for a program is now being rolled into the grant funding. Is there a possibility that Mr., uh, Dr. Schenk may be able to work with Ms. Hartlidge on, about rolling some of the operations cost that go along with a program into the grant funding?
Federal grant funding is very specific, and they have very specific targeted reasons. For example, targeted, uh, Title One is for academically at-risk students who live in poverty. So the positions that we can utilize that funding for are specific, and it's all, it's educational, it wouldn't be operations piece, but I will tell you that between Brooke and Melissa and Karen and Ms. Hubie, um, we work very closely to, um, collaborate and be cohesive, so we can maximize, between my funding and Brooke's funding, we can, um, make, get the best bang for our buck, so to speak. Um, and we're getting better at that each year, the more that we learn and grow and communicate together, um, with common goals in mind. So that's, you know, just this year, we, um... together with common goals in mind. So that's, you know, just this year, we, um, were able to recoup about $115,000 out of the educational fund, just through some attrition of folks that had used to be funded out of the title grant. And we were then, because of that, we hired in uh, lower salary folks that we were able to pull in, and a couple of others that hadn't been in the grant. So we, we're just really good at communicating and also with, um, HR and payroll to maximize all the, you know, we have to stay within the regulations.
Right.
Very tight. But there, the title grants and Brooke's grants have very specific guidance on what they can use for.
Okay, thank you.
And we do, we try to maximize those. Uh, the school permit grants that I know Melissa's been a part of at the middle school level, anytime we can write in expenses for transportation, then that'll be billed back to that, you know, respective grant. Um, the Kenny Bento, which is our homeless act, that, that grant, we have a consortium grant, so we didn't spend, even because of COVID, in 2020, so that $75,000 is now rolled over as this year's $75,000. So $150,000 will go a long way to help this district cover the cost of transporting our homeless students. And what we try to do, Daniel and Larry Romero, Dana Borders and Larry Romero do a great job in transportation, of looking at the Every Student Succeeds Act. So we have ESSO students who are displaced, and you have to transport them even if they're a district away. So we try to think very, very, uh, pointedly at picking up a McKenney Bento student, which we have to go and pick up, and then along the way, on the way back, we can pick up an ESSO student and it's, it's paid for out of that grant. So we're trying to maximize those grant dollars to go forward.
A good example of that is our fine gentleman in the back, um, our school resource officers, our Safe Schools Grant, you know, that, by applying for that every year, I think it saves us $100,000 a year.
Matching grant. We're spending that money to cover SROs in our buildings, so we get $100,000. We spend $100,000, we get $100,000 matching as part of that.
In Title I, there is a portion to that must be set aside for homeless students and transportation needs. So we're able to, through communication and conversation, we're able to make sure that we recoup what he's having to spend, it can be offset by grant money that I've had to, that's part of the grant approval process, is you have to have a certain amount set aside for that.
I appreciate those explanations because I think our public wants to know that kind of information also.
Now, in total, on the education side, you know, what we presented to you is 3.133 million in savings. You know, and now we're going to move into the operational side, uh, and present that to you. The first one up is Dr. Shank, uh, talking about transportation.
Good evening, Board. How you, how you doing? How you feeling? Do you want to make a motion to the turn? But I do, on all seriousness, I want to thank, just for a moment, I want to thank Mr. Woffner for having the courage to, to pick this up and to bring this plan to you. And I want to thank you as individual board members, because I know, I think the words inundated with, have been used, uh, repeated emails, phone calls, text messaging, probably you can't go anywhere in public right now and not be confronted by some, on some level, by someone. Um, so I encourage you to, to, to know that this has been heavily flavored by Mr. Woffner and our team, and we have tried to do this surgically. We ran a recommendation I fully support, and I believe that it is, uh, having the least impact on our students, which is what we're in the business of educating. So thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. So we'll go ahead and jump right in. Operations, the first few slides here deal with transportation. Uh, as we've talked and as we, we've met with individual groups, we have a very successful model in Charlestown where we have a two-tier system. We've been doing that for days. You know, we have a middle school, high school loop, and then we have an elementary loop. New Washington's a little different. We have K-12. You know, that's, that's out of the country. Uh, obviously you can understand if you're leaving New Washington, driving eight miles off the bedlam, you're going to pick up every single student, whatever their ages are. But what we always do is we have a strict seating chart. So the younger you are, the closer you sit to the driver, and then you're spaced accordingly by grade level towards the back of the bus. If you've ever ridden the bus, that's historic. I can remember, I couldn't wait until I was in high school and I could sit at the back of the bus, right? That's something that we still adhere to. It's something that going to a two-tier system in Jeffersonville, we would also strictly adhere to. Now, all of our buses have five cameras. They have four cameras focused on students and sitting in the rows of the bus, and we have one student, or one camera that's dedicated to the driver and the stairwell. So we, we feel firmly and very confident that that's, that strict seating chart will be adhered to, and we realize that it's successful in Charlestown, and we think it can be successful in Jeffersonville as well. And by doing that, we do anticipate that there will be a little consternation. You know, I have a book on my desk called Changes Great When You Go First. So this is change. And we all know change is resisted, and a lot of times change is resisted for no other factor but fear. Uh, there's a favorite song of mine, it's a contemporary Christian song, Fear is a Life. And not, you know, not, not to, uh, belittle anyone's fears that they have out there, because you're hearing the fears of individuals, our staff members. And I know you care for them just as much as we do. So we're trying to do this and put a plan together that is aware of that, cognizant of that. But we do anticipate 10 to 15 minutes more, uh, for some kids in and around Jeffersonville. We will have to have the autonomy, and I've talked to cabinet, and I've talked to the administrators, uh, our principals, we're going to have to have the autonomy to adjust our pickup times in the morning and our drop-off times in the afternoon. Now, that does not affect the teacher contractual day. But what that will have us do is thinking very, very, uh, candidly and pointedly on how are we going to cover these kids if we need to drop them off 10 minutes early than what we usually do at an elementary school. Uh, Mr. Woffner made reference to being able to starve Jeffersonville High School a little later. We do anticipate that. And how we will notify those parents is we have a very robust free app, Ride360. Most of our parents take us up on it, and it's, it's right there on our, our district website. Any change that's made to your student, your son or daughter's pickup times, drop-off times, location, it's there on the Ride360 app, and that's going to continue. So we'll be able to very quickly notify parents of any changes. But let me be very, very clear, we are not reducing the amount of kids we're transporting. Matter of fact, we anticipate by shrinking those no transportation zones, those walk zones, we're going to be shrinking those. We're going to be eliminating, and what's being proposed, the one at Bridgepoint. We're going to be shrinking some of those around Parkview Middle School and Parkwood Elementary School. So we anticipate actually transporting more students, but being able to do it much more efficiently. And you can see, uh, you know, how we go about doing that, we think it's about $495,000 in annual savings. And what this does, we're not, by reducing, by going to two-tier system and reducing 12 routes, combination of gen ed routes and special ed routes, we're not reducing any bus drivers. Okay? We always need bus drivers. You know, right now we play chess every morning. Sometimes I drive, oftentimes Daniel and Larry Romero drive. Seth, uh, Seth Hughes, one of our mechanics, and Chris, one of our mechanics, and Jeff Brooks, mechanics, they're always driving, whether it be to pick up a McKenney Bento student or drive the yellow bus. So we're all pitching in to make that work. This will help us catch our breath. So we're not eliminating the transportation position, other than what you're going to see on this next slide. And this is, again, this is what we've realized because we have, we call them super subs, they're full-time subs. And some of you may be on the, may be on the board, I think Teresa was probably on the board when this was brought up, uh, by the former director of transportation. And this is, and oftentimes, often mornings and afternoons, it's a lifesaver. These are full-time subs that they do have benefits, they're getting eight hours compared to five hours that our bus drivers get. But we have been approached by some of them saying, you know, I've, I've got things in the afternoon that I want to do. You know, midday, I'll take a five-hour bus driver position. So through attrition, through the retirements that we have and the leaves that we have, we'll bring some of those full-time subs into a five-hour position versus an eight-hour. Now, we'll still have insurance, but we, we don't anticipate a lot of consternation with this first bullet point. And you can see the savings there. And moving another into an administrative office assistant upon the time when one of those will be available. Again, to Bill's point, not all of these are July 1 immediate, but we do anticipate over the course of a year or two, a year and a half, that we'll see the full weight of those savings. You can see this second bullet, and I've had, I've had question about this, and I talked with, uh, someone up in the New Wash area, and I think she's going to try and, and do her best to, to talk to the parents and let them know. We proposed this last year. When we took our bus routes to bid, we proposed the elimination of two of the New Washington routes. And when you arbitrarily, you know, what we did is we arbitrarily assigned numbers. But if I'm bus driver on bus one in New Washington, and I always turn to bus one, and Route One changes, or Route One is no longer in the same area, well now I, I have some consternation. So we dealt with that with our contractors. We've already went through that. This is no change. We anticipate taking this back to bid, uh, after we get through this, this wave of, of changes in the cost saving reduction plan. But the contractors are fully aware, and we, you can see there that we anticipate about 30 kids in the New Wash area that'll have about a 10-minute longer bus ride. However, they will not have to go to a different location, a different stop. We'll get them to school on time and we'll bring them home to their same stop. So they're, so some of the rumors are out there that we're, we're going to make them drive to school, or we're not going to pick them up in a certain area. That's not the case. That's just a rumor.
You're not referring to the barren land?
Nope. No, not the barren land.
I have one question on the New Washington thing. When did we, when, when were they notified that this could be coming? We're saying last year during the bidding process?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, and you know, just as a reminder, those, those are now, we're in our sixth year of those initial contracts. So there were four-year contracts, and then they were extended for a year, and then we had COVID, we were ready to accept the bids, and then we had COVID, and we felt like it was the prudent thing to go ahead and extend the routes for one more year in such an uncertain time in our, in the nation's economic history. So we did that. Now, knowing what we know, we will be, uh, putting those out for bid probably in, in February, beginning, and then we'll, you know, we'll be able to give all of those contractors time to negotiate if they wanted to get a new bus. Those still have time to get a new bus and get it ordered before we would start the 2021, 22 school year. So that's kind of the timeline of taking that forward.
Alright, thank you.
I'll go ahead and go to the next slide. The next slide is facilities. Uh, I know you're, you're getting questions about this, I'm sure. And I will, uh, I will say this, you know, Mr. Woffner's done a fantastic job of meeting with individual groups that are directly affected. We met with this group of individuals, our custodians, uh, maintenance and labors, and one thing resonated, uh, from those meetings. And you can lay blame, you know, really, I don't think it, it does a whole lot of good to, maybe it casts a, a picture of the past, but it certainly doesn't help us for the present and the future. But they were, a lot of those folks in that meeting were very quick to, to blame past administration, past business officials, past board members. However, I wouldn't, and you can glean your own interpretations from this and assumptions, but they are now weighing on you heavily to not change. And the definition of insanity is doing the same thing repeatedly over and over and over again and expecting different results. So we, again, I applaud, I applaud Mr. Woffner for, for having the courage to take this to you all. So you can see savings of $800,000, and I had a question from, uh, where are we getting that? And in broad terms, we pay in excess of 11% of every one of our, uh, employees in this category for a pension. It's INPERS, it's the Indiana Public Retirement System, affectionately known as PERF, the Public Employee Retirement Fund. It's the pension. So we know that in savings, if what we pay annually, 3.6 million in annual salary benefits, we've worked with, uh, Mrs. Heldon and her staff, and I've worked with, with Laura Hubingher, we know that we're paying about half a million dollars in that portion, in that PERF portion. So we see immediately that savings are realized. And then when you look at the other 300,000, I think we're being very conservative, that the other 300,000 will be realized, and, and some of those inefficiencies that we know exist. Uh, right now, we, we, we already do outsource the Jeffersonville High School custodial, and we're paying 98 cents a square foot with ATS. Uh, we're in year three. That contract does run out at the end of June. And the economy of, the economy of scale, we met and had a commerce week, we do monthly meetings with them. So in our last monthly meeting with them, we asked, you know, knowing what we paid year one, year two, year three, what, with an economy of size, if you were to have had all of the 2.252, so 2,252,000 square feet, that's all of our buildings. If you were to have had the opportunity to bid on that, obviously you can understand that 98 cents would not have been higher, it would have been lower because of the economy of scale. And they said, you know, substantially low. So knowing that, and knowing that we, if you look at our numbers, the 3.6 million for salary and benefits, and you take that into that 2.25, uh, square, million square feet, we're at about $158. So there, in and of itself, lies some of that $300,000 in savings. So I, I do think, and here's, here's the thing, it really doesn't matter what, what I think, when I bring to you, the proof will be in the RFP. You know, the next step that we're asking is, is it affordable to advertise the request for proposal? And when those proposals come in, you'll be able to have us as a team gather all that information. You'll be sent that bid sheet, you'll know exactly what's included in that, and then you'll, you'll begin to see where those guaranteed savings lie. Next bullet point, metrics for cleanliness. You know, we're, we're not going to sacrifice cleanliness. You know, we're not, we're going to have strict, robust metrics for cleanliness, for school safety. We want a metrics that's going to be very strong, preventative and proactive, uh, maintenance, and also reactive maintenance. And reactive maintenance is exactly like it sounds. You know, we have a work order system currently. Uh, we have our own internal maintenance, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, HVAC. Those in, those positions and those levels of certifications will exist, they were, that's going to be a requirement that they're going to have to staff and hopefully self-perform that partnership that would, that we would enter into. So we're going to have those metrics for preventative maintenance, but also reactive maintenance. You can see the last bullet where it talks about some of our maintenance vehicles. That's a question that, you know, uh, might come up. Some of those are aged. Uh, some of those are fairly new, but not many. Uh, what we would probably like to see is sell, uh, we can keep those maintenance vehicles, but then we would sell and have a possible risk management where they would, they would take on the risk of the Husler 72-inch mower blowing up tomorrow. Right now it runs, but if they were to take that into risk management, and it blows up the next day, then it's on them. Uh, and I think you'll see through the RFP, you'll see, just like we have with ATS and the others that answered the last RFP four years ago, you'll see that they'll all bring certain dollar amounts of new equipment to try and win that bid. So that'll be a new ones that'll be in that, in that RFP as well. I'll go ahead and go to the next slide unless there's questions.
I have, you go ahead.
Well, I had several, so you might.
I have too. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, just so I understand, the 3.6 million in salary you mentioned, is that for janitorial and, and maintenance staff?
That's the 90, 93 staff members that represent custodial, maintenance, and labors. And we, we've ran scattergrams of that, and we know that historically we see about a 60% retention rate of our custodial group.
Right.
Obviously, we have a much higher retention rate of our maintenance staff. Uh, but I think another question that come up, how many of those are eligible for retirement? Now, I'm not going to speak to PERF retirement because I can't go into their own, to their own PERF account. But in having, uh, Mrs. Heldon run that, I think we have 35 that are eligible for retirement. Now, that in and of itself poses an additional issue for me. And one of the biggest reasons why we're talking about, uh, partnership of outsourcing where some, a company would have an abundance of individuals to full front that are highly skilled, we do not have an internship program. I do not have a replacement plan in place to, uh, replace any of those 35, quite honestly. And to a point that was made earlier, the level of entry pay that's, that's offered to the maintenance, and certainly the level of entry pay that's offered to our custodians, is not high enough to attract individuals. We have vacancies right now in custodial, HVAC, we, we sit on vacancies. And I, my hands are tied, I being able to offer any more money for that. And that's what we hope to do. I think Dr. Hartland mentioned, we hope to get a sound financial footing so that we can at some point in the future begin to look at attracting and retaining that top down.
I, don't take this wrong, don't mean it disrespectfully, but we're at 210% over the industry average now, what you got in this slide. How are we at that position whenever we're, we're over on our cost, but we're understaffed?
I wouldn't say that we're, I wouldn't say that we're understaffed. The individuals that we have, you know, talked with don't feel that we're understaffed. Looking at where ATS came in, you know, we had, I think, I wasn't here with the district, but we had 13 positions in custodial, nine of which were unfilled. ATS came in and they're stacking that with, on average of eight. So we're only averaging eight. And we've seen the metrics of cleanliness continue. So I don't believe that I would stand here and say that we're understaffed, but I definitely think that we, we have an issue with retention. We have an issue with being able to attract because of the, the entry level effect.
The other thing, going back to the 210%, I know we work on, for our maintenance staff, from what I understand, I think I've heard people in here mention it before, we have a, a work order system. In other words, a building management or building director someplace puts in, I need X, Y, Z.
That's right.
Take care. Do we have any data on the number of hours that are being put into those, on those work orders compared to the number of hours actually worked? Do we have any data on the number of hours that are being put into those on those work orders compared to the number of hours actually worked? Or actually paid for?
You mean as far as our labor costs because we're paying a straight eight versus how many work orders and how long those work orders are taking?
Right, because I'm looking at just two hundred and ten percent and I'm still thinking something doesn't seem right here.
The work orders, we do have, we use, they have a system called SchoolDoo. And it's not just myself or Todd Givens or Kathy Lynch or Tony Sprig. We have all of our administrators. Everyone in this room virtually has the ability to place a work order, whether it be changing out a ceiling tile or a leaky faucet or a running toilet or anything like that, staying on the carpet. And those work orders are generated and populated. However, we do have inefficiencies there. You know, we have a lot of individuals that if there's not a work order because of job current job descriptions, if it's not a work order that they are actively working on, they're not doing any other proactive maintenance.
Okay.
I'll make myself clear there. So there's a job description and they'll say, and and that's not disrespectful, but they will say, that's not my job description. I'll work on a work order that's HVAC, mechanical, electrical, plumbing or carpentry. If it doesn't pertain to those, then it's someone else's job to do, a custodian perhaps.
How do we handle preventative maintenance? Because uh.
We put in a work order, a lot of those preventative maintenance is go into a work order that's perpetual. So it'll it'll generate a work order monthly for.
Change filters.
Exactly, or cleaning of coils.
Okay.
Those are the ways that we try to, and Todd Givens does a pretty good job of doing that and putting those in and Kathy and his team.
Okay. I can't I can't put my finger on it, but that two hundred and ten seems like if we're two hundred and ten percent over, it seems like it might be a, let me back up, give you a little bit of history. I'm a job site, I've been a job site superintendent for ten fifteen years in the field and then I'm also doing project management now. So I have to watch my labor rates and my labor cost against the project bid amount. And if it starts going to this level, my boss is gonna come to me and say, you're not managing the job right. You've got people sitting on their butt and you're not watching them or you're you're not getting, you're not being effective. And again, I don't mean it disrespectfully, but it seems like we must have some kind of an issue going on if we're that far off.
Yes, sir, we do.
If we're two hundred and ten percent over.
Yes, sir, we have.
That means that we are having the double the people or we're paying out double the hours to do to do the same work.
And you won't you won't get an RFP from me on that.
Well, how do we get in that position, I guess is my position, my question. How do we get in that position is my question.
Well, you know, I I can't go back too far.
Right.
I've been in this role. But I I've made some, I guess, assumptions. I I think job descriptions that have painted people into circles by no fault of their own, but there's job descriptions that paint themselves into certain things that they will and won't do. We do have a system with the work orders that does not track individuals as robustly. Now, I started tracking with GPS. We've installed GPS locations on our locators on all of our vehicles. And I shared with Mr. Loffner and our team, we discovered some concerns, very, very big concerns on not not stopping in any building at all, but driving around every building and logging a hundred and ten plus hours or a hundred and ten plus miles before noon. That's a that's a gross inefficiency in and of itself.
Right.
Let's speak nothing to the fuel cost and the wear and tear on a corporation truck. But also knowing that they're not working on a work order. One hasn't often generated for them. So they're, you know, so you can't blame the individual entirely because there's they're not working on a work order. It's not like they're they're within their duty. However, the system that we have is grossly inefficient. I I do contend two hundred and ten percent inefficient because we are not keeping them actively working on enough work orders. And there's there's that circle of what they will do and won't do based on their job descriptions and their collective bargaining.
Right, and that leads me to the next to my next point. Because I I work with a corporation that Keith works under. And they have gone from self maintenance, self managed maintenance to they armored out to either CBR or Cushing Wayfield or Jones Line or one of these other companies. And those guys are gonna make corporate people in Chicago, New York, wherever, are gonna make their profit off the project, off the work. So if we could increase the efficiency of our system, that would and get us into where we need to be, wouldn't that allow us to be able to continue to keep our staff, continue to keep them in house and have better control or tighter control over them? And then also eliminate the profit line that one of the management companies is gonna be picking up because they're going they're gonna get it one way or the other.
There there will be a profit margin, that's for sure. And no one's going to come to this and and answer an RFP saying we'll take the loss.
Right, they've got to, they've got to make money.
But I do think, I go back to that five hundred thousand out of the conservative eight hundred thousand, that goes away. That's the difference, you know, if we, even if we were to maximize, and and when I say maximize our efficiencies, there's a lot of heartburn in in that statement alone, a lot of heartburn in that statement.
Don't doubt.
We're talking about overhauling the entire CBA job descriptions. We're talking about true accountability. There we're talking about shifting to second shift instead of all working, quite honestly, when they want to work and setting their own work schedule to work their day. We're talking about flexing hours so that we reduce or eliminate completely overtime by having individuals go on call. And we still aren't touching that five hundred thousand because we would still own that that PERF. So what what we're asking is permission to advertise the RFP so that we can show you that savings. And then it'll be up to Mr. Loffner and make that recommendation to the board on, we're asking for permission on January twenty sixth.
I'm gonna get some grief about this. I'm not definitely, I'm not definitely opposed to the RFP, okay? But what I wonder was if along with that profit line that a management company is gonna have in, they're also gonna be paying their people at least market rate or above because they're gonna have to have good people to do the job. So that eleven percent is still built into that number that we're gonna be charged somehow. Now, it may not be, if we if we can increase our efficiency or if they increase the efficiency, then that makes up for that profit line. I'm ready for that benefit, benefit package. But the benefit package is gonna be in there no matter what.
It'll be in the money.
We pay it or whether they pay it.
That's right, it will be.
So I don't know that it's actually going away. I think it may just be more efficiently used.
Well, and you know, one of the conversations, and I think it came up earlier, is what is our benefit? What do we figure for the fringe, thirty, you know, thirty percent on thirty cents on every dollar? You know, what we've found and what we're we're anticipating is, well, I think Laura said ours is about forty one.
It's forty two, forty three.
Average is twenty five to thirty. So there's that ten or eleven percent. We anticipate that will probably be their profit margin. And then we still have the five hundred thousand plus the three hundred thousand inefficiencies. That's where I came up with that.
If you, last question, and then somebody else can take it.
I'll let two weeks go.
Do you anticipate, because I've seen this happen too, somebody comes in and lowballs, and we talked about this in transportation a couple, probably a year and a half ago. Somebody comes in, lowballs, and they get you locked in, and then you got, then you got you with a barrel, and then all of a sudden start, the calls start creeping up.
Sure, and that happened to a neighboring district. You know, we we went and vetted that with a neighboring district and that that scenario happened. And then the company started replacing managers because they were on the manager saying they're not making any money. Where's the profit on this on this job? So they went through five, six managers with that contract. And after, I think, maybe, I think, Mark, it was a year, maybe a year and a half, they both parted ways and said, you know, this is just mutually, this is not beneficial to either either side. And then they went with a different company for the custodial. So lowest and most responsible, right? That's where that most responsible comes in, in my mind. If there's a cluster and they're all, you know, within two, three, four, five percent even, and then you have one outlier that's super low, then you you know that that's probably not.
You don't want that one, no, you want to take the middle bid.
That's right. So that's where we have the autonomy through the lowest and most responsible bid language.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Sorry.
Well, my question was about the, if you could explain how we're getting JPI done at ninety eight cents a square foot, but we're paying a dollar fifty eight a square foot for everything else, but you bent through that.
Okay. That's our cost, that's embedded in those fringes.
Chad, is this?
Oh.
No, I don't have a.
This doesn't account for, because when you talk about inefficiency, this, I mean, to me, there's a much bigger savings than we're seeing here. Because if you try to get this in line, how much are you gonna pay? You're gonna pay, you're gonna hire a supervisor to go around every day? You're gonna, you know, what are you gonna do? I mean, it's like keep putting your thumb on people who are gonna look for ways. If they're driving vehicles around, like you said, they don't walk around, they don't have a work order, but they're driving vehicles around, you know, and they're not, I mean, and looking for ways to, you know, leave it this minute, not, you know, and and I'm not saying, I think we've got a great custodial staff. I mean, over the years, I've seen a great custodial staff. But when you get all that going on in order to correct that, I wonder how much it would cost us to correct it, to put the people in place to correct it.
You're right, and we're so large and we don't have a system. Right now, we do not have plan operators and we do not have maintenance that are assigned to one building or maybe two or three based on the square footage ratio. So you could try to make that equitable, you try to make that equal. You would also want to take into account the past work order history on a building. So they they may need more attention. They may need, instead of, you know, one to one, it may be one to two, but it may be two to one on certain instances. And you're always gonna have those emergencies that pop up. So, you know, to to Mrs. Patrick's comments, it would be very, very difficult because of the expansive multiple campuses that we have and the multiple buildings we have. It could be done, but it's going to be costly. You know, I don't think that there's, because of what she just said, we would more than likely have to have more supervision. And certainly, there would be a lot more, I think, consternation, quite honestly, because this, we're talking about a whole pedagogical shift in what we have been doing historically up until this point.
Question?
Yes.
So let's say the way to outsource all these positions, what happens to the PERF money that we pay in for each one of those buildings?
What happens to the PERF money? So there's a portion, if they are not vested, ten years, it takes ten years if you have been PERF. If if an employer has been paying in to PERF, you have to have ten years to get vested. If you have nine, you have a portion of that of that of that PERF money that's yours. You you take it with you. If you freeze it and you never work in a in a PERF eligible position, which means for a county government or municipality or another school corporation in the state of Indiana, if you freeze it at nine years, you will get that money upon retirement age. If you work another year somewhere, then you obviously are vested. But if, but you do, if you don't have ten years, you do lose a portion of that because a portion of that is the pool of money that districts pay in. And then that pool, it's not, it's not ours. We don't get to just say, well, wait a minute, bring that back to us. It's there as part of the way to support the state pension program. And they they actually anticipate that not everyone that initially gets paid in the PERF will, you know, will stay that ten years to get vested.
So we're gonna get that back?
No. One more question. So as far as I can tell, like the the most of the shrink, most of the the money that we are losing, is it just coming from maintenance? Like, you know, how how's this working? Like, I'm not understanding as as far as how this would affect the custodial staff. I mean, like, you know, if it if it's something like custodial that refuses to take the change of trash can, okay, that's on that custodial. And if it's on, like, you know, the the maintenance person driving around for seventy miles in a day and not doing anything, how how I feel that affecting that custodial for what that maintenance workers do? So there were the bad apples added in this.
You know, one, I think it's a too strong approach for my answer. One would be, I I don't, I don't believe we have any new employees, even the one that's been driving around because they're not working on a work order. And they're trying to, you know, just to stay busy, I guess, rather than sitting in their truck or sitting in a in an office or sitting somewhere. If I I firmly believe that if those individuals had management and work order to work on, I I believe most of them would do it, most. I can't stand before you today and say every one of them would. But I can say that most, I believe, would. Custodians, I think we have a lot of good custodians.
We do.
But you're always going to have those that need active evaluations. They need to be actively supervised. They are all in the same group. They're all in our custodial group. They're all underneath that one group collective bargaining agreement. So, you know, when we when we talk about changing and and looking at the RFP for outsourcing, then it does, by the very nature of that statement, it has to to include them all.
When was the last that the partner agreement was signed?
Oh, well, it was signed, I believe, Trish could probably answer that, August, Septemberish was when it was probably signed by, well, August maybe it was signed by them, but it's a one year that we negotiated with that group.
It ends June thirty if they're all like that.
What is one year?
Yeah, because they had a two year prior. So, but then this passed with Mr. Loffner coming on and knowing the uncertain times that we were in because COVID had already hit. It was prudent, I think, for everyone to offer just a one year. And they, what we did is they had they had a two year agreement. So they realized, I think it was a fifty cent incremental raise for that group. But that that was because of that two year expiring. And then the next year, we just had the one year that'll expire, year two thirty.
If we signed it in August or September, was it retroactive back to July? So therefore, if we pick up a, if we do outsource, we pick up an outsourced company in July or June, July one, then it doesn't affect, we're gonna do a contract buyout.
That's right. Yeah, we would not be severing the terms of the contract early. No, sir.
Chad, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the things, the inefficiencies is in the contract where you have custodians that maybe there's a stained ceiling tile, correct me if I'm wrong, Chad, that they walk by every day and they don't change it because it's not in their job description to change it. So a maintenance person has to be called or, you know.
What else is another example?
Something like that. On the other side, that the maintenance worker probably walks by trash cans that are full, but that's not their job to change it.
But that's true. Oh, my God, some twenty weeks, that's two hundred and ten percent. You gotta reclassify. You know, five, everybody's on the same job title. If everybody's on the same contract.
Yeah, that's one of the, you know, we. We want to, we want to make sure through this process, we want to make sure that what you've hit on is realized. That we do anticipate that there will be, not only will will there be a partner with a different, it will not be GCCS, it'll be a different partnership with a with a privatization organization. But we also anticipate that there will be those changes. Anyone who looks at preventative maintenance and things that aren't emergency in nature can be done second shift. Right now, we don't do that. And that's that's an inherited issue and that's something that we need to address. But that's something that we anticipate and know full well. Every individual that is working with us in all capacity, custodian, maintenance and laborer, we have told them and we're and and Mr. Loffner assured them that we are going to look for a company that gives you every equal opportunity to come on board. Now, they they will have a robust, I'm sure, they will have a robust evaluation process because we're gonna require it. They're going to have a level of pay that is where our folks are at now because we're gonna require that. They're going to offer insurance to those and we're not gonna let them take everyone to part time because we're going to require that. But to say that it's going to be the same that they have been doing, that's not, that's not the case. There will be those types of of major process changes with any company that were to to get the the approval by the board.
You know, my my thought about this from twenty seven years in this corporation, knowing extremely good maintenance people, extremely good custodians, and hearing from a lot of them, you know, and you know it as you supervise them. You know, there's custodians giving kids lunch money and and doing things above and beyond, you know, putting windshield wipers on, teachers' car when it's raining, sleep now, I saw that. What, I I like the fact, I mean, I know we have to do something, I get that. I just, I think the perception out there right now is that we're kind of whipping the herd. And so from what you just said, look, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that you're still employed and still making some money and then have an opportunity in a company that can pay you raises. Right now, it's not, that's not in the cards for us, you know? And so I think it's it's critical to know that this is gonna be kind of symbiotic in nature. It's gonna be able to help them and and particularly, they're really not really the ones that walk by the ceiling tile, but the the workers, and we've got a ton of those. So I think we can keep people employed and and they can have an opportunity to grow. So I just, like you said, we'll be cautious, we don't.
And you bring up a very good example because we we outsource food services to Aromar. From what I've been told, they were able to give their employees a raise here in January. I can assure you, based on our financial situation, we would not have been able to give them a raise if they were still employed by us as far as our food service workers. You know, probably not next year either, you know? So there is that component of it.
Right. I just, like I said, I just wanted to kind of be clear, we're we're looking to keep people employed. And I think that's the fear of people is that they're gonna get, they're gonna lax. So that's not the case.
No, it's a difference in culture. So like, you know, in this, in this new company, they might have the guy that's the management, the mission to do it. But it still seems wrong to me that we haven't had that.
I agree, but and you're right.
That's been for, that's been for years though.
Yeah. And like, you know, like you said, we can't, you can't pay for like the, I guess you say the above and beyond tangibles that we got. I mean, even including what you said, I mean, we've also had. I mean, even including what you said, I mean, we've also had our custodians like keep out insurers at our school. And that's something that, you know, we don't know will happen when, you know, this other company because also we don't guarantee that these same people who have been working in our schools are still going to be the same ones that do, you know, once they go to the state. You know, because we don't control their hiring.
No, and I think that's, you touch on, that's one of the things that I think will be a mitigating factor as we review the RFPs. Because one company may say, here's how we plan on your current staff that you have in custodial maintenance and labor. Here's how we anticipate bringing them on. Another company may have a completely different approach to that. So that'll be one of those factors that, you know, Mr. Lawler and his team will be able to look at as we come over the most qualified that we would want to then take to the board for, you know, for asking for approval, the advertising for the RFP. Then we will, what our timeline is, is February 8, we'll have a mandatory pre-bid meeting. So anyone who intends to submit a bid will have to attend that February 8. And we will have a packet of information for them that every company will receive. Things like historic costs, you know, historic data that supports where we are with all of our expenditures and operations as it relates to custodial maintenance and labor. We'll have all of our expectations for landscaping, for mowing, for snow room. We'll have all of our expectations and obviously square footage, campus maps, equipment list that includes every, every air handler on roofs. And they'll have a chance then, the next four days of that week, to tour with myself and our team to have any questions answered. They'll be able to look at the condition of the wax on the floor. They'll be able to look at the condition of ceiling tiles. They'll be able to go up and crawl spaces up on the roofs, down in the pits. They'll do, and hopefully they'll do their due diligence to get all those questions answered. We'll have an RFI that they can answer and I'll send out to everyone to try and answer those inquiries. And then based on that, we'll give them about a month's time to bring that bid to us. And then we'll be bringing that to the board for consideration. That's the initial timeline we anticipate.
And that's very similar to what we did with outsourcing our food services. I mean, I was very happy with that process and, you know, to my understanding, most and all of our employees had an opportunity to stay at Airmark.
And there's been some negative comments about, you know, food service and all that. But the big reason for that is COVID related, not what Airmark's doing. I mean, it's just hard for Airmark to find employees during COVID, you know, to go into a school and work in the cafeteria.
Yes.
You know, and I will tell you one thing about this process. You know, we've done our homework. Myself, Chad, Laura, we've talked to other super tenants. We've visited other school districts. We've asked them two questions. Amongst the main two were, you know, number one, did you accrue the savings you thought you would by going this direction? And number two, are your buildings as clean or cleaner than they were? You know, and the people we've talked to have said yes to both those questions.
So this has already been approved. I can tell you that right now, we had an owner and contractor meeting today with ESG. We're 25, with lighting upgrades, we're 25 percent at Jeff High. So 25 percent of the lights have been changed over and we're 5 percent in Charlestown High. The reason for that is they, obviously, Jeffersonville represents the largest number of light halls, so they sent most of their crews there. But we are, they are on schedule. They do, since we tried, they started about a month late, if you remember, the whole reason for that. But they anticipate being able to try and catch up on that schedule, you know, for us. So they're still looking at about a 12-month timeline. The first year of savings, and you can go, if you have your ESG contract, it's in Board docs, you can go to page 38 out of 94, and you can see that the first year is $523,833 in guaranteed savings after full implementation of every scope of work in the contract. And then that goes up each year to be realized about a $750,000 guarantee after that full implementation year 15. Let's talk about that next one for just a minute, and I won't go off the rails. But I can tell you that just since we've been back, we've had three walk-in coolers or freezers go out. And when they go out, we fix them. Sometimes we use bayonet wire to get them going. But we have to move every bit of food out of one and into another building. And then Natalie's team, our laborers helped with that. Kathy, Tony, myself. Oftentimes, our mechanics will grab a bus because it's pretty easy. You just throw stuff in a bus and then take it to a building. But oftentimes, it seems like it happens on a Saturday evening. This time of year, it's not too terrible on us because obviously it's 25, 30 degrees outside. But it happens quite a bit. So this is where I think there's a potential, as Mr. Lawler mentioned earlier, for future energy savings contracts to look at your walk-in chillers and coolers on the buildings that we know they're the oldest and the most aged. And you, it's just like when you go to buy a brand new refrigerator, they'll tell you, if you're replacing an old refrigerator, this thing's going to pay for itself in six months, nine months, a year's time because they're so much more efficient. The same would hold true with some of those. And we would, we would look at that as future potential savings. To Bill's point, we have to, we will have to have a high level of oversight with our outsourcing partner. If the board goes down that road, and also our internal staff, myself, Laura, Mr. Lawler and his team, for those savings to make sure that we are constantly talking to ESG and making sure that we're giving those guaranteed savings. Mentioned this, Harshaw train, you know, we've already reduced by about 300 plus thousand for the calendar year 2020, a 40% reduction in the cost with Harshaw train. It's now actually a train. It's no longer the Harshaw train. They've been bought up by corporate. But we want to continue that. That contract is set to expire in September of 2021. So if you're doing that math, if we were to ask for maybe an outsourcing partnership to start July 1, and they do self-perform and they have all, they have a risk management of all of our equipment, we will have a couple of months there where we are terming out the time and material and the portion of the contract that we're paying monthly to train. But I don't think that that's necessarily negative because I do think that there's going to need to be that transference of information, hopefully. Now, I will say, historically, when contracts end, they don't sometimes end all that well because especially, now, do I anticipate Harshaw train may answer the RFP? You know, now, I don't think they're in the, I don't think they're in the business of custodial, but they certainly may partner with someone. And the contract will be with one company. If they filter that out for landscaping, they filter that out for custodial, then we will still have those high level of metrics that we want to have met. So Harshaw train may, you know, come to the table and answer the RFP. But we want to continue to reduce those costs. And then the other is outsourcing service contracts. We already do that. I'm talking about our inspections and water testing. I'm going to have a meeting next Wednesday about our water testing, our water softeners. We have not tested our water for the softness with Indiana River Water. We want to do that and see if some of the individual water, sometimes I say individual, I'm talking, they would, you know, 500 gallon tanks. And then they buy the salt and, you know, we're paying a market for all of that. Are those things truly worth it? And we'll have to just look and see. But those are some potential big savings in what we're paying, especially when one of those water softeners goes out. The next slide. Remember this amount, 200,000. That's, that's what we spend historically in covering days off with our transportation staff, our bus driver. So $200,000 annually. Because it's been my experience in every role and capacity I've had in education, the number of days that an individual classification of employee fee earns or is bargained or is given through handbook, historically, they'll use those days. So if they have 10 days, they'll use eight or nine. Sometimes 10, sometimes 10, and then they just take off days. Especially if they're not the breadwinner for the household. That's, we're no different here. So we pay $200,000 in annual cost for covering subs for this department. So you see that first bullet? I would, through this plan of cost savings, I would like to enter into robust contract negotiations with our transportation department, our drivers, and we have one monitor. So the collective bargaining agreement, there's one monitor who was grandfathered in years ago. He still works for us. He's a great employee. He's the only monitor that's in that CBA. The rest are our bus drivers. But I would like to enter into a collective bargaining agreement, or at least negotiations, where we go away from what they have been getting in the abundance of days because we know they're going to take them. We used to have a 189-day contract. So they're paid for 189 days. On a normal school year, we transport kids 180 days. So we have, obviously, some holidays that are paid in there and then we have some professional development. You know, we can't just start school first day. So we meet with them for two to three days in advance. We do annual safety training. They get their routes. They update and drive actually before school ever starts. And then we try to do that again in the second.
And that would even be less than that with the learning days potentially in the calendar.
Sure. So that's, that's the first bullet. And that's, and when you see this TSA, you know, that is the tax shelter annuity, 403B, you know, pre-tax tax shelter annuity, where typically you would see employees paying into that with their pre-tax dollars, which they can and have the option to do. But we also, I don't know if we match or if we, I know there's a dollar amount we pay.
One and a half percent.
About $18,000, is that what it represents, Trish?
One and a half percent of their annual salary, so.
So there's, there's some savings there as well because we would, we would negotiate that out of contract. They would still have an opportunity to continue to invest. I'm going to lose that money. That's their money. They've contributed into a 403B, a pre-tax tax shelter annuity. And they can continue to pay into that. We just would not be doing that, that one and a half percent. Purchasing adjustments in upcoming years, we can go into that, but that's where we, the amount of money we spend. And you know, there's, there's a lot of power in just saying no sometimes. Or let's hold off until I have appropriation. Let's hold off until I get my 1782 notice for 2021. There are times that we have to do that. If it's not mission critical, if it's not an emergency, then we slow down the cart launch, blank check, run out to Lowe's and buy what you need. I have implemented, we're not doing that. We're not going to continue to do that without a robust checking balance. That's changed. I've been called a lot of names because of that. Mr. Lawler has heard some of those. That's not popular, but that has to be done when we know we are spending and that's outpacing our money. We're overspending. Utility cost savings, I think we've already talked about that. Mr. Hawkins made reference to that. This next one, if you haven't got a call about it yet, now that this is going to go public, it's probably going to get a call.
It's out of warranty, Bill.
Yeah. I mean, you're, you're probably going to get a call. I can tell you that we lose 12 inches, the 4 inches of water a week at this pool. Those of you who are with us and remember, that's exactly what was happening in the Charlestown Middle School's pool three, four years ago.
For the public that may be watching, would you translate that 12 to 14 inches into gallons?
Oh, jeez. I did that calculation once.
Oh, you did it, and I don't remember what it was.
Yeah, gosh. I want to say 90 some thousand.
For each square foot?
Yeah, I did the formula. I don't have it now.
I can tell you for each square foot, it's eight pounds of water.
It's a substantial amount. Not to mention, I mean, obviously, we were paying for the water, right? Times two. Pay for it in and then they assume it's going out. So you're paying, that raises your sewer bill as well. And then you have to heat that water because that's all new cold water coming in. And then you also have to treat that water with our chemicals. So it is a grossly inefficient pool that does not get, I get to see any kids in that pool. And I pop in River Valley often. Now, I know it gets used by some.
We don't use it during the school day. During the school day, we do not use it.
You're going to get calls about this one. But what we, you know, what we anticipate doing, and Mr. Lawler can speak to this in more detail, is that on a future facilities, plant, whether it be year three, four, or sometime in the near future, we know that there needs to be some renovation down at Jeffersonville High School's pool. And this savings we could attribute to, you know, that good faith effort in the, in the near future.
And here's what we believe is that with Charlestown Middle School's pool coming back online, you know, between Jeffersonville High School's pool, Charlestown Middle's pool, New Washington, we can accommodate those youth swim groups. You know, we could try to fit them into those pools. Will they have to drive a little bit if they have to go to Charlestown Middle to get high in the pool? Yes. You know, but we feel like we can accommodate them.
One of the things that I've heard is the possibility of expanding the Jeffersonville pool, making more lanes. But I would caution that we need to be very careful with that because expanding that pool, number one, I don't know, Chad, I'm sure we've been building to be able to move it. Number two.
Terry Lancer told us the same thing.
Okay. And then number two, the, the cost to expand the pool is going to be, and my guess, just pure guess, I don't do these pools for included, it's going to be as much more than to build a new, or to, to bring another pool up online. So, yeah. So, I mean, I don't, for anybody that's watching, my personal opinion is, expanding the pool is not really an option.
And we would let architects guide us on.
Understood.
I will tell you, one of the things that's really affecting this cost is, maybe you said, one of our maintenance people, pretty much 70% of their time is there dealing with that pool. But that's a whole other cost that we didn't even factor in here because of all the issues.
And there are neighboring districts that do, I mean, we brought up Albany, Floyd. New Albany's, if they want to, if they want to swim, students at New Albany are groups of, they go to Floyd Central's Highland Hills School. That's where they, they have to travel there. You know, so Mr. Lawler may have mentioned that with the Charlestown Middle School pool coming back online in the very near future, here yet this school year, we feel like that's, that's a plan that we can support and we can bring to you in recognition.
How many pools do we have total?
We have New Washington, we have River Valley Middle School, we have Jeffersonville High School. And then now, in the near future, we'll have Charlestown Middle School's pool.
If we eliminate, we would have one in each community.
Right. We have three, with the closure of River Valley.
So, so this is a complete closure, not a renovation?
Yeah, this would be, this would be a closure.
River Valley would be. And eventually, we would have to figure out what we're going to do with that space.
How many classrooms do we have?
Oh, several. You know, and it's, it's, it's nice because of where it's located because it's on the next year of all. So you have a lot of options. You know, you could easily bring Bill in and essentially.
That school's crowded, too.
Yeah, it is.
Because remember the demographic study, you know, the projections for River Valley was for it to grow.
Yeah. It offers probably six classrooms easily, you know, in that space. And then you have, you know, you have to look at some of the ancillary restroom areas and hallways. So probably six classrooms in that area.
What's the condition of the New Washington School's pool?
It's actually, we, we did a few things. It was leaking. This time last year, I would tell you, it was losing about three inches a week. But now, we've done a few things in terms of the gentleman that takes care of those pools for us. But it's going to need attention on a larger scale at some point in time down, down the road. But again, Mr. Lawler's totally community and giving input sessions, and he supports one pool per community. So that'll be essentially something that we have to, but if, I don't think it needs to be on a year four or year five.
That's what I was wanting to. Do we have any idea about how long it's going to be? Because eventually, we're going to have to do something to it, too. I mean, the pools need maintenance.
Sure, they do. And it's, it's well maintained. You know, what we try to do to reduce costs is, we don't let anybody have to die or turn it up. You know, it's not a spot or a hot tub. So we control that very, very close to the cup. We do get a little bit of consternation with that. And it's, it's too cold. They want it at 84. We're going to set it at 79. There's a big difference in the amount of energy that's used to heat up that amount of water. So those are the things that we can continue to work on. But it's not leaking currently, you know, other than just the revaporation and the splashing of kids. And it gets you, it gets you to life quite a bit, the New Wash pool does.
Do you know if the piping systems are subject to the same kind of problems at Charleston?
No, it's, it's a newer pool. You know, the ones at Charlestown and River Valley are sister schools. So we had a lot of cast iron that, you know, is just not, not holding anymore. But we've had to retro some of that at New Washington.
Is the Charlestown pool going to be online soon? I think the concern that I've been hearing from folks is the impact of the River Valley pool closing to the Special Olympics.
Okay. Yeah, I could say that, you know, right now, they are replacing the tile. So, you know, they're, they're nearing the end of the project. They're telling us by the end of February, they'll be ready to fill the pool and we'll be able to have ownership of the pool. So I don't know when the Special Olympics events are, but we would not close River Valley until, you know, after that period of time anyway. I mean, this, again, a lot of these are considerations for, you know, July 1. Now, would we, if we got the go-ahead for this, we'd have to talk about looking at the schedule of how that pool's being used. And then if we can't displace them to another pool in the district, then we may try to keep it open. But I think Mr. Lawler said, most of these, if not all of these, if we can, we would take them back to July 1. And then the last one, that's, you know, that's something we've already received a retirement and what we've talked with Airmark and Natalie Turner. We would look at that position, who is our refrigeration maintenance position, going over to Airmark. And Airmark would then outsource that with a, you know, with a vendor that's specialized in refrigeration. So we've already talked about that. And knowing where his salary is with overtime and the things that I've. things that I mentioned earlier, and what they probably would pay for time and material with an outsourced vendor, we think there's probably a savings of about $50,000. That's all I have. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Now, with that being said, on the operational side, that total is 3.039 million. You know, as you can see, it's pretty balanced. Total of well over $6 million in terms of cost savings. We feel like it's a very good plan, strategic plan that will help us get going in the right direction and make us a financially healthier district in the near future. One thing, you know, I want to do in summary is go back again over those things that are out there in the community, even being talked about as we speak in the out in the community. Those items that are just misinformation, not true. You know, we're not cutting related orders. We're not cutting a bunch of teachers, ripping a bunch of teachers that are going to increase class sizes. We're not decreasing the number of students that we will be transporting in this plan. All those things have been reported out there and that's just not true. It's not happening. You've seen the plan. We feel like, like I said, it's a very good plan. And let me speak to one other thing. You know, I know what I signed up for. I know this position, you get beat up, you get talked about, you know. But I feel like I have to defend my cabinet for sure. You know, I'm, I'm a big boy. I can take it. But I, I don't appreciate people personally attacking people in my cabinet, you know, in terms of why weren't they the first ones cut? Why don't you cut them? They made too much money. Why don't you cut their pay? Why don't you cut the superintendent's pay? Here's what I'll tell you. Number one, the first thing I did when I got into this position, we did cut administrative positions. I already went over it to the tune of $700,000 to $800,000. Number two, I would tell you, I'll put my cabinet up against any cabinet in the state of Indiana that are that good. And I'll also tell you, they don't make as much money as people in their same positions in other school districts. As do I. Okay? I can tell you, I make $25,000 to $30,000 less than our previous superintendent. I make almost $60,000 less than the superintendent before that. You know, and if you look at the average of what a superintendent's paid, you know, for a district our size, I'm making about $30,000 less than, than that. And I'm not upset about that. I know what I signed up for and I'm fine with it. Okay? But when people start personally attacking myself, the cabinet, frankly, I don't appreciate it because we have a cabinet here that for the most part has worked their whole adult lives in this corporation, that love this corporation. Myself, I've been here 16 years, you know. I'm not doing this to inflict pain on people, you know, to upset people. I'm doing it, you know, and giving this cost reduction plan to you because it is necessary. It has to be done. You know, this is something that we have to correct that will make us a better district in the future. So with that being said, we, we want to bring this to you, you know, at the board meeting on the 26th. I will tell you, you know, my recommendation to the board as your superintendent is that we adopt this cost reduction plan in full, in whole, that we do not à la carte it or break it apart. You know, that we need, we know it needs to be done. We know what direction we need to go, you know, and we will plan on bringing it to the board on the 26th. So with that being said, if there's not any other questions in regards to the cost reduction plan, we want to talk a little bit about the governor's next level teacher compensation report.
I have one other, because it just came in as an email during the meeting. I've heard repeatedly before and I was hoping this Laura would be able to possibly address it, that the question comes down to, many in the public seem to question, in fact, my wife's even done it, is how is it that we're in trouble financially, but we're building football fields or whatever.
Fair to ask.
And if, if, just so I don't start talking again, if somebody could point that out, point out the different funds and how it works and how the taxes pay you at this.
Yeah. And I'm going to let Laura answer that question because she will answer it much better than I.
I'll try to do it quickly. You have an education fund that's shaped with revenues come in based off of the formula. That's a formula that is created by the state of Indiana. And when you hear the biennium, when superintendent was talking about the government getting a year one percentage increase of 2%, year two percentage increase is because they do that on the biennium. So the formula is always evaluated. Their state revenues are always evaluated and therefore the formula comes out to provide funding for each school district. The reason why a school district can have different levels of funding depending on the programs that they receive. So in this formula, there is a foundation and to the credit of the governor, foundation has been taken to an equal level in that formula. The other portion is complexity and that is based on socioeconomics of your school district. So students are entitled to apply for frame reduced lunch and that is the complexity rate and that is part of the formula. So our district receives about $6,000 on average per student. So that's how that revenue gets sent in.
That's education fund.
That's the education fund.
And that comes from the state.
That is state funds. It's where your teachers are paid from, your education, your instruction, all those needs. Okay? Now, remember though, when we talked about how legislation has changed on how those state funds come in and how you need to move them to the education or the operations fund. So a portion of those dollars belong to the operations fund. So it does come from a state funded ref.
Sum.
Correct. So how that's determined is that when you go back and look at your general fund, you will find that section that was defined legislatively that belongs to the operations fund. In our case, it's $9.5 million. And remember, they're saying that you should be able to operate by transferring less than 15%. Otherwise, you'd be on an audit list. Well, that's where you're paying your utilities. You know, if your utilities go way up, the property insurance goes way up. You know, that, that, that's a hard management item to get to. Is that my timer?
Yeah.
The thing is here, so. Okay. So that's a portion of fund operations.
Yeah. But in the simplest terms, you can't take money from debt service and put it in education or operations.
Right. So property taxes also come into the operations fund. And there's a maximum limit that I go with levy at the $110 rate, which takes us to our maximum limit that we're allowed to levy for, support your operations fund. But remember, you need more and that's a direct impact on your circuit breaker tax gap.
By levy, you mean that we as a school corporation tell the taxpayers, you got to pay us this amount of money?
A dollar 10. Yeah, we promised that. We kept the tax rate the same. Regardless of where our property values are, we kept the tax rate the same. That was our commitment. That was our promise.
Right.
Now, you have these other two funds, debt and pension. We described pension, which was a state mandated requirement to borrow bonds to pay off pension obligations. And we're paying those back. Okay? That is a tax rate. There's no, there is no funny business with that at all. Right? It is, it is what it is. You don't add to it. You can't borrow more money. There's no, no, no thought process to that. It is what it is.
So we borrowed money at some point in the past to pay off all our pension costs?
Correct. Probably about 2004, 2006. And they were allowed to be refinanced so you could get the better tax rate because if you go back then, the tax rate probably isn't that good. Okay. Now you have your debt service. This is where we're investing into the capital of our, of our buildings.
By capital, you mean?
renovations.
What we see in here.
Lights, the optimal learning environment. Okay? With me?
Roof over our head.
Roof over our head.
Okay.
Talked about the significance of the sports complexes. We talked about all those things. That is a taxing rate based on the bond and we do not borrow more than to take us over that dollar 10 that we asked for. Rest assured, guaranteed, no matter what, whether we have that tax rate or not, whether we borrowed money or not, we would still be having this conversation today because you cannot let one impact the other. Circuit breaker, state funding is all the operational entities of running a school district. We don't have money in our capital projects that used to be a taxable fund available to do the magnitude of items in this entire district to manage all of these buildings and get them to the level. What's exciting is that we do collectively here want our children to have new buildings, great facilities. So this whole entire plan, we look at it a little bit differently, such as how amazing is it that our kids get to go to the newest buildings in this district? We are looking at each and every building and evaluating should we put good money after bad money? We are doing this exciting thing because we know that this is the place to be in the state of Indiana. Okay? So I'm saying that we would be here no matter what because the debt service is a bonding issue.
Lauren, could you answer one question? I think I know the answer to this. If we didn't do any bonding to improve our facilities, renovate our facilities, if it just went by the levy, how much money would we have in the capital projects fund or operation fund just to do work on our buildings as far as?
Even if not.
Improvements.
Not. $4 million circuit breaker has eaten up capital projects. I'm surprised that we haven't even come about transportation issues because that's, that, that also is another factor. That's what the impact of circuit breaker tax gaps do.
People believe that we're already getting all this money to improve our facilities and do all these projects and we're not.
That's my point.
It's not there.
The $20 million that we approved as a bond for 2020 doesn't, it's impossible for us to use that for any of the things that we're talking about to save on this.
Correct.
And if we hadn't borrowed that money, then we would not be in any different condition here right now with our operation.
You are absolutely correct.
If we do nothing, our facilities are going to crumble around.
Right. And if we, and to your point and Dr. Mellon's point, if we don't improve our facilities, then students will go, parents will choose students, send their students to other schools.
I believe that.
Yes. Okay. All right. I just want, this is all for the benefit of the public. So you guys.
The debt funds cannot co-mingle with anything.
Right.
And they're used very specifically for their defined reason. Pension for pension, our borrowing for bond issuance, for lease rentals, and we've done for improvements is capital improvements that we're doing in the district and in the two tables.
Capital, that includes new stuff, but it also includes maintenance.
Yes.
Or long-term maintenance, like, like the, the showers that we had to put in the parking.
Hey, exactly.
Okay, all right.
And I'll go back to the way I started. We didn't set this system up. The state legislature did.
Correct.
You know, and it's an issue. It's an issue not just here in Grand Clark, it's throughout the state. You know, and if people would see that and then call their local state representative or state senators and advocate for their public schools, maybe things would be different for us.
I understand it, but I did want to, I realize I kind of played it the way that it did, but an email that just came in and said, how are you going to spend all this money within your budget? And that was almost, it almost fooled her.
Those funds are available in different, different ways. So 10 years ago, 10 years ago, when the implementation went in, you know, that was a taxable rate, general fund. Capital projects was its own taxable rate. Transportation was its own taxable rate. And bus replacement was its own taxable rate. And now that no longer exists. So most of the money comes from the state fund. Thank you, Ken.
All right, your treatment's over. We got to move on because it's getting late in the evening. I know we've been here almost three and a half hours, but there's one thing, one more thing that I wanted to just share with you. Most of you probably, probably already looked at this. The Indiana School Boards Association, the Superintendents Association asked us to, you know, go through this with our boards and want to do that real quick. It's the next level teacher compensation report on teacher pay. Basically, it talks about, you know, currently Indiana had an average teacher salary of $51,190, which is last in the Midwest. I believe Kentucky, Ohio, Illinois are all above us. This commission studied this, you know, and said that our, our average teacher pay should be at $60,000. But in order for the state to get the average to $60,000 for our teachers, it would take 600, make 600 million dollar investment from the state legislature into funding to do that. Okay? And they came up with recommendations in this report. Some of them are recommendations that districts should do to be more efficient with their financial resources so that they can divert money to teachers and teacher pay. Some of the recommendations, there's 37, I believe, are recommendations that the state should do in terms of revenue, generate more revenue for teacher pay. What I wanted to do real quick is just go through the first 13 and it'll be quick, I promise you. Just to let you know which ones we are, are currently doing, are looking at doing, or are in this cost reduction presentation. So the first one, Laura's going to help me with this. The first recommendation for districts is join the state's pharmacy benefit plan. This was one of the recommendations they felt like districts could save money by doing that. And I will tell you, we're going to have MJ, our insurance advisor, look at this and see. We're not currently doing that right now, but we'll, we'll look at it and take their recommendation on what to do with. The second one, limit working spouses' participation in district healthcare plans. Other words, if you have a spouse, if you teach for us and you have a spouse that works somewhere where they can get insurance, then they need to go off our insurance and get their own. You know, there are 50 some districts do that across the state of Indiana. We don't currently do that, but once again, we'll have MJ insurance, our advisor, look at it and make a recommendation on should we do that or not. Number three, exclude Medicare eligible retirees from healthcare plans. That's in the governor's recommendation. We already do that. We already do that. Number four, increased utilization of centralized procurement. Other words, you know, whether it's the Wilson Center, contracts you can get through the state, you know, just be more efficient with that. And we already do a lot of that. I think we could probably get that. Number five, join a liability risk pool. And we do not do that and there's a reason why, Laura.
Right. So what we have to remember is when you do look at these things, that you are also taking on the additional liabilities of all our school districts. Where I always want to, you know, caution and take a study on is our special education and different ways that we, you know, are, we have our particular staffing that we do, but you might pull in with somebody who may be worth a co-op or not. You have no control over that. So I feel like that when we do our insurance renewals, we are definitely doing our due diligence through that process. I'm making sure we're getting our best bid for our buck with the evaluation of our claims.
Okay. Next one, number six, right size district teacher and staff ratios where appropriate. You know, we, we just talked a lot about that. You know, what, what we could do or there's a lot of possibilities in that regard. Just what, you know, how big do you want to make the classes? Share, number seven, share services with other districts and external organizations. Because there's so many school districts in the state of Indiana, just like here in Clark County, we have four, well, five now. You know, how can you work together to share, you know, resources and be efficient with money? Number eight, implement additional best practices. One of those in there, and I won't read all that. Well, purchase the best value health insurance available and utilize health savings accounts, wellness programs and tobacco free discounts. Incentivize higher deductible consumer driven health plans by providing financial incentives to teachers who select these. these lower-cost plans. Other words, more high deductible, get away from PPO, you know, and fund HSAs. As many, there's also in the best practices part, as many districts have done, privatize or form competitive employment practices for services such as food preparation or custodial maintenance when appropriate. Okay? That's what we just talked about, in terms of doing RFP for custodial services out of town, source custodial services, maintenance services. It's in the Governor's plan. In that same best practices, reduce legal costs by increased utilization of arbitration and other alternative dispute resolution processes. Also, divest, divest vacant real estate or unused property to reduce and avoid ownership costs. That's in the Governor's report. Next one, utilize regional education service centers to save costs on trainings, professional development, large purchases, human resources management systems, and other services. We're currently not involved with Wilson. You know, we don't pay that fee. It would cost us up $50,000 a year to be a part of Wilson Education Center out in Charleston. You know, so that's something we're looking at. You know, would the, would we get savings there somehow while still paying the $50,000 fee to join? You know, that's something we look at. Frankly, I will tell you, through our grants, we do our own PD, and this team over here does it really well, as far as our professional development for our teachers and principals. Additional revenues, number nine, and this disappoints me that they put this in here, pass an operating referendum. That's what they're telling districts they should do. If you want to give teachers more pay, pass an operating referendum. That's the answer, which is disappointing. Number 10, increase Medicaid reimbursement claims. We do a pretty good job of that already. You know, we're doing that. Number 11, increase private contributions through foundations. Other words, we should go and ask our education foundation or other foundations to give us money so that we can pay our teachers more.
Is there something in there about bake sales?
Which, once again, does not make any sense. Our foundation, you know, I think their budget's around $150,000, $200,000.
Oh, my future.
Yeah. Well, let me tell you this. For us to give all of our teachers in the district a 1% pay raise, it would cost us $750,000. And the extra $750,000 reoccur. One, that's just 1%. And policy changes, number 12, award higher salaries to teachers with high-heat students and in teacher shortage subject areas. And the last one is 13, improve flexibility for teachers to control their individual compensation through career, career ladder systems, which we already have that in place in Bridgepoint. You know, so just wanted to share those with you. If you have the time to get into that, read it. You can also read the other items that the state recommends on their side, or that Governor Holcomb's, you know, report recommends that the legislators do. One of them is actually, I don't know how many of you, one of them in the other part, is I don't know how many of you contribute to a 529 account, Indiana's 529 account. Right now, if you contribute, contribute $5,000 a year into that account, you get $1,000 deduction off your taxes, straight deduction. They're thinking of taking that away and then using that money to put into teacher pay. You know, you'd still be able to contribute to a 529, you're just not going to get the $1,000 tax credit. So, there's other items in there. It's really a good read, actually, to see what they came up with. So, I'll leave that at that. You know, we can discuss, discuss that at another time and day. I think you'll hear more about it over the next three or four months, now that the state legislature is back in session. It's already out there quite a bit. So, but just wanted to go through it and tell you what, what we are doing and what we're not doing, and what's actually in here and also in our cost reduction plan. So, with that being said, do we have any other questions, comments, concerns? I appreciate your time tonight. Appreciate you listening. I know it's a long night, and appreciate your consideration to the cost reduction plan. And like I said, we, we plan on bringing it to the board on the 26th.
I feel, I feel like all of my questions have been answered tonight. And I think that even with all the emails and phone calls I've gotten, including the ones we got during this, that said that they watched the program, and that was in quarter to nine, she sent that. But anyway, anyway, I feel like all of my questions were answered. I think the only thing for me that's left out there is the emotion. And I don't know what we can do about that, except reassure these people again and again and again, because I think the data speaks for itself.
And I will tell you, our, our team, myself, Dr. Shannon, Laura, and Kim did a video Q and A panel discussion. That'll come out tomorrow morning. It'll be sent to all of our parents. And also, the community will be on social media. They can watch that. It's about 17 minutes long, I believe. It'll answer a lot of questions that people have been bringing up. We're also sending out a Q and A document to parents that they can read, you know, that, that we put together that answers all those questions we've been seeing on social media and clarifies those. So, we feel like we're trying to get that information out there so that people are accurate, you know, with what's, what's going on. Yes.
I have one, one comment I'd like to make if I could. And it has to do somewhat with what we're discussing here, specifically Bridgepoint, Corning Border. I personally, as a, when I was, was a parent of school-aged children and am a grandparent now, prefer to see smaller schools. But the reality is, the community doesn't want to support smaller schools. The community tells me that they want smaller schools. But when it comes down to pressing the legislators, as you pointed out, pressing the goals, I mean, the governments, state government, to provide the funding so that we can support smaller schools, it doesn't happen. And as we see in this presentation, it costs money to be able to have a school. If you have, it's just economies of scale, and it's unit cost per person educated.
My personal belief to go along with that is the state legislature wants consolidation is what they want.
They do. They want larger schools.
Yes, they want. That's what they want.
I mean, I think you told me that one of the numbers now is 700 to 1,000, right?
Yep.
I think it was in South Carolina.
Yep.
That's for an elementary.
Jerry McKibben said, all the demographic studies that they've been doing, as far as on new elementaries, they've been anywhere from 750 to 1,000 students.
Right.
You know, that's what, well, that's what people are building out there.
Now, again, I don't, I don't like that, I don't want that, but until the state government goes along with it, which is going to require the public to be able to put a huge amount of pressure on them to change that, we can't change what we're doing here, and we just have the realities that we have to live with. So...
And as far as like that school, like I also did that voting, probably in the last couple of years, in support of Bridgepoint. And I hated that this was, you know, I've tried to get everything done for that school, and I hate that this was the only way to get a remedy, to get those kids to go to better school. So, if anybody, you know, wants to say anything negative about that, you know, the way that we have to do this, we are against the law to do that. But in the same token, you know, where you live.
Yep.
That's it.
Well, Dr. Harlidge, you know how when you're teaching a university class at night, and you can start seeing these feet pointing towards the door?
[laughter]
I see that. This means now, Jerry, thank you all very much for coming out. We appreciate it. Thank you all for your hard work.
[laughter]
You just seem to need to...
[laughter]